Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Stratford Zoning Commission is now open to public hearing for those petitions advertised to be heard in this session. I wish to announce that should any items on tonight's agenda take more time than anticipated, this public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM to be continued at another date, which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 PM tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post August 16th and the 23rd. These properties were duly posted August 20th. And we have a full commission this evening, so there will be no alternate seating. And at this point here, if anyone has their cellphones or any other device, please shut them to the vibrate, or shut them off, so as to be courteous to the speakers. And Ms. Phillips, if we could have you read off the agenda, item number one, please.
It's a text amendment, petition of the Stratford Zoning Commission seeking to amend 3.6A of the zoning regulations regarding projections and setbacks for the ADA compliance.
Mr. Abansky, would you read the text, please?
Yes, Chair. So currently, there are no provisions within the zoning regulations that look to accommodate necessary improvements that comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. The ADA ramp codes define specific standards for slope, handrails, heights, and turnaround platforms, which are critical for the functionality and safety of the structures. Historically, the zoning office has allowed all ramps and other forms of building access to encroach into these setbacks in an effort to accommodate residents with diverse needs. The proposed text amendment will formalize this process by adding a new Section 3.6A to the zoning regulations, which will better protect the staff that processes these types of application requests. In addition, this text will more formally accommodate residents who require special building access when their project complies with the ADA. If a ramp or other building access improvements do not comply with the ADA code, it will be required to adhere to all setbacks outlined in the zoning regulations. After a review of the proposed text amendment, Planning and Zoning staff has found that this text amendment is consistent with the plan of conservation and development for the reasons cited in the staff comments. One, to preserve and maintain character in the diverse town neighborhoods, to simplify the zoning code to increase its usefulness and understandability; and three, to streamline the development approval process, to assure that developments are consistent with the town's development regulations and are approved in an efficient and prudent fashion. I'll also note that on August 21st, 2018, the Planning Commission voted to give a favorable recommendation to the Zoning Commission for the adoption of this regulation, their reason being that it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Abansky on this text amendment change? Mr. Solhavy?
Just a quick question. Was there anything particular, anything that brought this to your attention, or was it just in your review of the regulations that it was found that we were deficient in this area? Just curious how it came about.
It actually happened while the zoning enforcement officer was away on vacation, and I was processing applications. And I had spoken with a resident who said that he had spoken the week prior with the ZEO, and that the resident was notified that as long as the building access improvement met ADA standards, we allowed them informally to encroach into the setbacks. Stratford is, I believe, the third oldest community in the state of Connecticut, and I think these needs are something that we're going to be seeing more and more. And like I said in the staff comments, this protects the staff from making judgment calls and allows the regulation to really do the enforcing for staff. So we just thought that it was a no-brainer for the town and for the staff.
Seems like a good idea. Thank you.
Any further questions? Would anybody like to speak in favor of this petition or this text change? Anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close by Mr. Solhavy, seconded by Ms. Phillips. All those in favor, say aye. Mr. Solhavy, if you could read text amendment number two.
Petition number two, text amendment, petition of the Stratford Zoning Commission seeking to amend Section 3.4 of the zoning regulation regarding lots lying in more than one zone.
Mr. Abansky?
Thank you, Chair. So, the current regulations that govern how... Thank you very much. The current regulations that govern how lots that have more than one zone are treated is confusing and very difficult to interpret. There are an abundance of properties within the town of Stratford where one property has more than one zone, more specifically Stratford's commercial and industrial zones. An update of this regulation will result in land use classifications based on the zone designation that governs the majority of a lot, eliminating situations that could create development inconsistency within a neighborhood. The Office of Planning and Zoning has prepared the proposed text amendment that looks to simplify the current language of Section 3.14 by making the regulation more concise and improve the process of assessment, approval, and development. The current regulation has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven very confusing statements about how lots with more than one zoning district are processed. We did an analysis of four towns with similar demographics to the town of Stratford and looked at as well as commercial, industrial, and residential makeup, and we felt that the proposed text amendment simplifies it, is one that I can actually interpret within a few minutes as opposed to a few weeks of reading over and over our current regulation. The proposed text amendment is consistent with the 2013 plan of conservation and development by updating the town of Stratford zoning code to reflect the future land use plan that will provide for increased development opportunities in appropriate areas, to protect the character of neighborhoods, and maintain the town's important waterfront and open spaces; and number two, to simplify the zoning code to increase its usefulness and understandability. I will also note that also on August 21st, 2018, the Planning Commission voted to give a favorable recommendation to the Zoning Commission for the adoption of this regulation, with the reason being that it's with its consistency with the plan of conservation and development.
Any questions for Mr. Abansky in regard to this text? Ms. Phillips?
One question. Well, first of all, I think it's adverbial. We do need to simplify it. It was, and it is, an onerous regulation, so completely agree that we need to revise it. The concern I have, and it's really the question is, when the lot, understanding that the larger property will take the designation, if the smaller lot is, say, in a residential, because we've had commercial overlap with residential a couple of times, if the larger lot puts, that regulation puts an onerous burden on the smaller lot because it might be in a residential, do we have any provisions where the smaller lot, particularly if it's residential, can appeal that because of the onerous provisions?
I'm not sure if I understand. Could who appeal it?
Well, you got a big lot that says it's commercial, they have regulations, they allow so many heights, so many setbacks, blah, 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 all right? It happens to overlap into a small commercial piece, I mean, sorry, a small residential piece, which is clearly smaller, and by the new regulations, that smaller piece now becomes commercial inadvertently, okay? But that little piece could, the new rules could put a real burden on the landowner of that little piece that isn't able to withstand that. How do we handle that? Do we have some way that that smaller piece, if they can prove that, hey, that designation really puts a burden on us, puts us in a really negative position, how do we address that?
Well, I would say that as any applicant has the opportunity to amend a regulation, to seek a waiver of a regulation, and that's what the Zoning Board of Appeals process is for, and that process is in place for an instance just like that.
So they would have to go to BZA and ask for an variance. Now, they're going to end up paying for that for something that we did. That, it seems a little unfair, because we created an intangible situation that we're now asking the smaller lot to fix. We've got to give, I think, some recognition that we created a problem, and they shouldn't be burdened with the cost of it. Or, I mean, I can see going to zoning, to BZA, but it seems unfair that they need to haul in and pay all those fees, at least the fees. I understand if they have to get attorneys and all that other stuff, but the fees. Is there some remedy that we can do?
Well, and I think you make a good point, Commissioner Phillips. I think that we're actually solving a vast majority of the actual problems that we're facing, and the instances, I think, or the circumstance that you're mentioning would be in the vast majority. You know, but with that being said, no regulation is perfect, and no regulation fits every single parcel of land within the town. I think what we try to do is find ones that, and develop ones that fulfill the intent of the plan of conservation and development, and make it so that staff can actually interpret the regulation. And that was the, what the attempt was here with this.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So not taking away the bigger benefit, which I agree with, that by far, probably 90% will fill into that. This board always seems to find that 10% that is out of the norm. So I'm looking for something that says, okay, if the staff feels that the landowner of the smaller piece has provided enough justification to say, hey, this ruling that you now have changed makes a undue real burden on us, that there is some way that the staff can either say, all right, we'll take it to the Zoning Commission and ask the Zoning Commission to consider this in their discussions, that might be the case, or that we can at least waive the fees if they have to go to BZA, something that doesn't just sort of slam the door on those small 10% of occasions.
And in response to that, there's always an opportunity for town staff to contact the chairman of the board of the Zoning Commission and ask them, you know, explain the situation just as you've laid out, and discuss it administratively here at the Zoning Commission's meeting. And at that point, you know, the board can either say, you know, no, you know, we don't think this fulfills the intent of that regulation, and, you know, they need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I mean, it's, the Zoning Board of Appeals essentially interprets the zoning regulations, but, you know, that would have to be a judgment call on the Zoning Commission to determine whether or not that's something that they want to either accept or give the town staff the ability to say...
And that's what I'm thinking. Maybe even in here with just a word that says, except when the staff feels necessary to bring it to the zoning commissioner, I mean, the zoning chairperson.
If a proposed development does not fulfill the intent of the regulation, which is to preserve the neighborhoods and their character.
Something. That's my thought.
Thank you. Mr. Henrick?
Just so I understand this, this regulation deals with split zones on a single lot, so when you're referring to the smaller piece, you're not referring to dual ownership, you're referring to, you're referring to a singularly owned lot by an individual or corporation that is divided by a zoning line, not a, not a two-piece, two-piece ownership within, not two lots. You're not talking about two separate lots, one of them being larger, one of them being smaller. You're talking about one single lot, sole ownership, that's divided by a zoning line, and then this would go enforcement to, in regards to the zoning of that lot. But it has nothing to do with separate ownership or separate lots, lines that go between separate lots. We can't enforce, we can't push that zone onto an abutting neighbor's property because we want to incorporate it into a larger piece. It only deals with the zoning line that runs through a single ownership lot.
Correct.
Okay. So it just, it wouldn't, I mean, to Ms. Phillips' question, I don't think, I understand her concerns, but I don't think that that has an impact on, this regulation and this text change would have an impact that would, would have a concern that she has, or create a concern that she has.
Ms. Phillips?
Only to, only to what Mr. Abansky actually answered, which is what I was looking for, that if it is contrary to, you know, the look, feel, the, I want to say it just as set, the character, that's what I'm looking for, the character of the neighborhood, that the, and again, all I'm saying is that it leaves that judgment call, if there's a good case for it, that the staff can bring it to the chairman and see if we should consider it.
Okay. Thank you. I don't believe that that would be the issue on this particular text amendment, because the way it's explained, that I understand, it would be all owned by the same ownership. So the ownership of the smaller piece would be the same, and they would not be, you know, looking to dispute that with the bigger piece. They own the same, right, exactly.
I wasn't really so much thinking about them arguing with themselves. I was more thinking that in a particular instance that we struggled with, where the property overlapped into a commercial area, of course, the ownership wanted to be all commercial, I'm sorry, it overlapped into a residential area, and the ownership wanted to make it all commercial, and that was fine, but the neighborhood wasn't fond of that idea. And we would essentially be eliminating any way for them to redress that. And I was just leaving an open door that says, if there's a hardship that can be justified that, you know, doing this to the neighborhood, the staff would have an opportunity to hear those concerns and bring it to the chairman and say, hey, we've got some complaints because changing this piece is going to force an encroachment that the neighbors are really going to hate, and they're really putting a good case together, I think we should at least allow it to be heard at a zoning meeting. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. We can take that up further in our administrative session if you'd like. Anybody else would like Mr. Solhavy?
Couple of quick questions. So, this would obviously be, it says at the time of the enactment of these regulations, so this is only, would be going forward post-adoption, we don't go back and redo. Okay. There's probably a couple of areas where it would be, would be good to be able to, but be that as it may. And then the calculation of bigger versus smaller, that is a strictly land area calculation? There's no other factors that are being brought into developed versus undeveloped? Okay. Okay. And God help us if there is, there's nobody that's more than in two zones in Stratford, are there? There's nothing, there's some that are in three?
Actually, I shouldn't say yes. I would not be surprised if there is some place where there is more than, more than two zones.
So then it would be obviously the largest?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, would anybody like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition, seeing none? I'll entertain a motion to close by Mr. Vacola, seconded by Mr. Solhavy. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? So moved. Mr. Vacola, if you could read item number three on the...
Number three, text amendment, petition of Perkins Family Partnership LLC seeking to amend the zoning regulations by eliminating Section 3.14 regarding water bodies, water courses, wetland, and coastal resource protection, and amend the following sections that reference this regulation, 8.2, 8.3, 8.5.7, 10.1.3, .14, .3.2D, and 10.1.3, 14.4, .2B.
I guess I don't have to ask if the petitioner is present?
Good evening, Madam Secretary, Madam Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, Madam Town Attorney, members of the Commission, and Mr. Abansky. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the Perkins Family Partnership LLC of 1 Boston Post Road, Milford. Mr. Evans Perkins is sitting in the first row to my left in the blue shirt. My client owns the Subaru New Car Dealership on the Post Road in Milford and the Honda New Car Dealership on the Post Road in Westport. This is an application for a zone text amendment, an administrative application for a CAM application, and an administrative application for an erosion and sediment control application. Now, this matter, the zone text amendment has been referred to the DEEP and to the Planning Commission according to statute. Both of those agencies have not as yet completed their review of the zone text amendment. So you will not be able to act on this application tonight. We are aware of that, and I would ask you to keep the public hearing open at the conclusion of my remarks so that you can receive the comments from the Planning Commission and the DEEP.
One second, Mr. Knott. Did you want us also to include number four in this agenda?
Yes. I'm going to do them both at the same time.
Okay. Mr. Vacola, if you could add number four in your...
Number four, 1050 Wood End Road, petition of Perkins Family Partnership LLC seeking administrative approval for a coastal site plan and plan review and erosion, sediment controls for a non-licensed motor vehicle prep slash storage facility used in a MA zone.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this one presentation will cover both applications. Now, I want to reference the folder of exhibits which I've just handed to each of you, to which I will be making reference during the course of my presentation, the first two exhibits of which are photographs of the subject property, which is known as Delinequist Steel Company at 1050 Wood End Road. That company has been at that location for decades, we're all familiar with it. My client is a contract purchaser of that property, subject to these zoning applications being approved. It's my client's intention to use the existing building on the property to do vehicle preparation and setup for the new cars that it sells at the two dealerships that it owns. All of this work will be done within the confines of the existing structure at 1050 Wood End Road. No new additions to the building are proposed. If you look at Exhibit 3, that is a site plan of the property that Jeff Gordon will get into in more detail in a moment. You can see that I have highlighted in blue the area of tidal wetlands, which are located to the south and the west side of this 3.74 acre parcel. I will speak more of these tidal wetlands a little bit later in my presentation. It's also my client's intention to clear-cut some of the existing trees on the property and use the excess land to store new and used vehicles owned by the two dealerships awaiting pre-sale preparation. These proposed uses are permitted in the light industrial zone in which the property is located. Now, at this time, I want to introduce Jeff Gordon of Cotospodi &amp; Associates, the engineers who designed the site plan, which is the subject of tonight's CAM and erosion and sediment control application. Jeff will provide you with the letter from a licensed engineer requested by Jay in his administrative comments, which letter assures that the town, that the proposed development will comply with all requirements of the town's MS4 stormwater permit. He will also address the drainage issues raised by John Casey in his administrative comments. comments. Also on tonight's agenda is our application for a zone text amendment, which I will address with you after Jeff completes his presentation with respect to the CAM and soil and erosion control applications. Jeff?
Thank you, Attorney Knott. My name is Jeffrey Gordon, I'm president of Codispody and Associates, doing business 263 Boston Post Road in the town of Orange, again, representing the Perkins Family Partnership. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's a pleasure to come before this commission. This application really is, is a fairly simple adaptive reuse, we have a three and three-quarter acre parcel, formerly filled wetland area is to the west of the existing building. The most significant improvements that we have to make is to elevate that area in order to be above the flood elevation for storing of vehicles. Obviously, the dealerships and the insurance companies do not want you storing your vehicles in an area that could be susceptible to flooding, so with the new flood elevations, we are going to elevate the site. The vegetation that has invaded over the past 20 years obviously needs to be cleared, but we do have a small area of maybe eight to 10,000 square feet of tidal wetlands that remain on the property, but the bulk of the tidal wetlands are to the south on the state property. So that is what Attorney Knott will be developing that idea a little bit further. So what we have to do on the site plan, we have to create a ramp area as we come in to the existing driveway, then we have a, an asphalt ramp that would elevate in order to reach the new grade that would be raised for the stone parking area. The plans that were originally submitted said the surface was to be determined, the reason for that is in dealing with the state, we have multiple agencies that we're dealing with, and water quality had a certain methodology they wanted us to approach, and that was not quite the same as the methodology where the town engineer wanted us to, to do. And there was a little bit of a contradiction in the MS4 requirements, they want us to reduce the amount of impervious areas, but then they were also asking for us to pave it. So it's kind of hard to do both, we had tried a value engineer looking at alternative types of pavement, but these would prove to be cost prohibitive and really would not provide any better benefit than just a stone parking area. Now, the key thing for us is to create permeable, uh, surface area, so the water that gets into the groundwater and eventual tidal water would not have an adverse impact on the tidal wetlands. This is our, our, our mission with CAM. We don't have navigatable waters here that we're looking to have a water dependent use on, as we would on along the river or along the shoreline, but our, our key interest is not to do anything that would adversely impact the tidal wetlands, such as having pollutants that would get directly into it. So, we have a design with the stone, and then we have, this is an exhibit that Attorney Knott had, that addresses the, the wetlands. But we have a sizing of underground infiltrators that we're going to use. Now, I'm going to just turn in this, one copy of the letter. We're only able to answer this like four o'clock today because unfortunately, everybody's been on vacation the last two weeks and we finally made our contacts.
Explain what that letter is.
Yeah, I'm going to go through the letter. It talks about the material that we talked about, the surface to be determined. Again, it was because we were value engineering the type of different pavements that we could use, so the determination is that it would be a gravel surface, would provide the most efficient cross-section and would meet the water quality standards. Also, the material below that would have to be free draining material as per the comments of your town engineer. Drainage calculations were provided this afternoon to him, but again, until we knew what kind of paving surface we were in agreement on, we really couldn't evaluate that, but we were able to get something in today, and we have some test pit information, we had the existing impervious areas quantified for him in that letter, and we were able to give the assertion as was required, and as, as our engineer Bob Wee Way had signed off, that we would provide effective disconnection under the town's MS4 stormwater permit. It's actually a statewide permit that the town is developing its protocol to meet that state permit. Also, as a notation requested by Mr. Casey, that when we have this ramp coming up, we have modular block wall there to help in differentiating the transition, any section of that that's over three feet tall requires a building permit and needs to be engineered. So we're going to add that on there, and he also requests that the driveway apron at Wood End Road be repaired, so noted, and we had some inability to get some inverts in one of the catch basins because it's silted up, and until we get permission from the owner to get in there or clean it out, we have to get that piece of information for him. Also, he asked us to address the sight lines of the driveway. It's a posted 25 mile an hour speed limit, but to the west, we have about 800 feet, almost all the way to the intersection, and to the east, we're in excess of 500 feet, and under the, the intersection design standard, when this is a driveway, not an intersection, but for 25 miles per hour, we're well in excess of that for, for passenger vehicles, for single-body trucks, and even for tractor trailers. So, again, the erosion aspects of it, everything is drained towards the center, we have the stormwater management and the, the hay bales that would be required, we have a planted embankment to a transition. As you can see, sheet SP4 addresses the S and E measures, topsoil stockpile traditionally done, and then we're going to have permanent vegetation on the embankments to the north, west, and south. The eastern embankments, because it goes down to our parking lot, that is going to be a riprap embankment to make sure that it is stable and we don't have any vegetation, mulch, or anything of that nature that would wind up at the bottom of the hill and into the drainage system that we're trying to manage. So, we have our landscaping plan along the perimeter, we have security level lighting, not car dealer lighting, just to make sure it's secure with a perimeter fencing, and again, it would be an open storage lot. The parking, depending upon how you calculate the parking for use, industrial or warehouse, we're good either way. Generally speaking, we're looking at about a dozen employees working on the site. Right now, there's 12 parking spaces there, we can provide in excess of that.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to be clear, John Casey is happy with the crushed stone surface that we are proposing. That was resolved in John Casey's favor, and he mentions it in his comments to you. So that's no longer an issue. At this time, I want to reference exhibit four, which is a copy of my letter to John Rosowski outlining my request for the zone text amendment, essentially deleting section 3.14 of the zoning regulations. Now, if you look at the second page of that letter, you will see that I am asking for six different sections of the zoning regulations to be amended. In fact, what I am asking for is that section 3.14 of the zoning regulations be deleted. The other five sections referenced in my letter are included simply because these are sections of the zoning regulations which currently make reference to section 3.14 of the zoning regulations, and therefore need to be amended also. The substantive gist of my request, however, deals strictly with the elimination of section 3.14. Now, if you look at the bottom of that letter on page one, I make reference to a meeting that I had with John Rosowski and Jay Hibansky on May 23rd, 2018, at which time, we all discussed my contention that section 3.14 of the zoning regulation was now an obsolete and inappropriate regulation. If you reference exhibit five, this is a copy of section 3.14 of the zoning regulations, and I like to read the salient portions of it. It's entitled Water Body, Water Course, Wetland and Coastal Resource Protection. No new building construction, increasing building area shall be permitted within 50 feet of the mean high water of any water body or water course, or within 50 feet of any freshwater inland wetlands. That's in the first paragraph. In the last paragraph on the next page, it says, no new building construction, increasing building area, including minor additions, shall be permitted within 75 feet of coastal resources. So you've got a 50-foot prohibition against construction within 50 feet of inland wetlands, and a 75-foot prohibition of construction within 75 feet of tidal wetlands. This is unusual, because neither the Stratford Inland Wetland Regulations nor the State of Connecticut Coastal Management Act prohibit any and all activity in proximity to wetlands. The state law, as it deals with the CAM Act, the state law as it deals with inland wetlands regulations, the local inland wetlands regulations, the local zoning regulations that deal with CAM applications, which you're hearing tonight, the local zoning regulations that deal with erosion and sediment control applications, which you're hearing tonight, do not prohibit activity within any proximity of wetlands. They regulate it. There's a difference between prohibition and a regulation, okay? Section 3.14 prohibits any and all activity in proximity to wetlands. These environmental regulations simply regulate the activity to make sure, the ones that I cited, make sure that no inappropriate or reckless construction activity goes on with any proposed development, but they do not prohibit any activity within proximity to the wetlands. Yet 3.14 does. Significant state statutes and numerous local municipal regulations already exist, the function of which is to protect the same inland wetlands and tidal wetlands which section 3.14 of the zoning regulations seek to control. For example, inland wetlands are protected by the oversight of the Stratford Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission. If you look at exhibit six, this is a copy of Stratford's inland wetlands and water courses regulations. As you can see from this exhibit, Stratford has in excess of 27 pages of regulations, which are specifically designed to protect the integrity of inland wetland resources within the town. 27 pages, and this isn't 27 pages, a third-grade text, this is serious, complicated, and technical stuff. Similarly, tidal wetlands are protected by the Stratford Coastal Area Management Regulations, section 3.1.1 of the zoning regulations. Exhibit seven is a copy of that regulation, and exhibit eight is a copy of section 3.1.2 of the zoning regulations, which are Stratford's erosion and sediment control regulations. Once again, sophisticated and complicated regulations already exist to protect both inland and tidal wetlands. Exhibit nine is a copy of Connecticut General Statute, section 22A-94, which is the State of Connecticut Coastal Area Management Enabling Statute, by which DEEP oversees all CAM applications in the state of Connecticut. You will note from subsections A and B of this statute, which I've highlighted in yellow, that this Coastal Area Management Act specifically applies to the town of Stratford, among other towns. Not every town, not every town in the state of Connecticut is subject to the Coastal Area Management Act. They're listed in subsection A, but you can see Stratford is one of, I don't know, a dozen or two maybe. And it also applies to all property within a 1,000-foot linear setback from the mean high water mark and coastal waters. In other words, all tidal wetlands now covered by the zoning regulations, section 3.14, all tidal wetlands covered by 3.14, which I'm asking to eliminate, are covered by the State of Connecticut Coastal Area Management Act, the Town of Stratford Coastal Area Management Zoning Regulations, as well as the Town of Stratford Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations. For example, section 22A105 of the CAM Act, which is the blue tab on exhibit nine, requires all municipalities to undertake coastal site plan reviews in accordance with this statute. Section 22A106A, the yellow tab, provides a penalty of up to $1,000 per day should a property owner violate the act, $1,000 a day, you violate the CAM Act. Section 22A107, the purple tab, requires a property owner to post a bond to guarantee completion of the work ordered by the commission. And 22A108, the pink tab, deems the violation of the CAM Act to be a public nuisance and authorizes the Connecticut Attorney General to institute proceedings in order to enjoin such a nuisance. So there are significant protections in the Connecticut CAM Act to protect coastal resources, tidal wetlands, within the town of Stratford. We don't need 3.14 to do it. Needless to say, between the Stratford Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Regulations, the Stratford Coastal Area Management Regulations, the Stratford Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations, and the State of Connecticut Coastal Management Act, there is more than adequate oversight of proposed constructing activity in proximity to both inland wetlands and tidal wetlands. Section 3.14 of the zoning regulations essentially gives the BZA more authority over activity near wetlands than has either the Stratford Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission as the inland wetlands, under the Stratford Inland Wetlands Regulations, or the State of Connecticut DEEP and the Stratford Zoning Commission as the tidal wetlands, under the CAM Act. By virtue of the fact that, that our regulations have 3.14, anybody that violates that 75 or 50-foot setback's got to go run it to the Board of Zoning Appeals asking for a waiver. What do they know about wetlands? Nothing. Now, curiously, if you look at the history of section 3.14, you will see that going back to May 8th, 1965 zoning regulations, amended to May 29th, 1968. My father was a zoning lawyer in this town, so I have, I have the 1960 zoning regulations, okay? Section 3.14, that's exhibit 10, by the way, section 3.14 was a flood prevention ordinance. If you look at, I've highlighted it yellow, it's entitled Flood Prevention. So back to '65, '68, 3.14 protected persons and property from the danger of being flooded, okay? Now, following that regulation to the amendment on December 15th, 1987, which is exhibit 11, you will see that section 3.14 was still a flood prevention regulation, same regulation 10 years later, okay? Now, fast forward to April 17th, 1991, which is exhibit 12, and all of a sudden, you see that as of April 17th, 1991, this regulation was amended and it now became 3.14 Water Body, Water Course, Wetland and Coastal Resource Protection. So, when that amendment went into effect, 3.14 changed from a flood prevention ordinance to a water course, wetland, and coastal resource protection ordinance. Odd. Now, what happened between December 15th, 1987, when 3.14 was a flood prevention ordinance, and April 17th, 1991, when it became a wetlands protection ordinance? What happened in between those two years? Well, look at exhibit 13. Exhibit 13 is a copy of Connecticut General Statutes 22A-42, subsection C of which says, "On or before July 1st, 1987," "On or before July 1, 1988, each municipality shall establish an inland wetlands agency or authorize an existing border commission to carry out the provisions of the inland wetlands commission enabling statute." So as of July 1, 1988, every municipality had to set up an inland wetlands commission, and Stratford did, okay? Obviously, what happened here was that the then zoning commission, and I think it was, I think in '90 it was already just a zoning commission, not planning and zoning, I think it was zoning. The then zoning commission saw that another commission in Stratford was going to have jurisdiction over inland wetlands by virtue of that statute, which made it mandatory for the town to create an inland wetlands commission. But the zoning commission at that time, and I knew them well, did not want to cede any jurisdictional area to another body. The zoning commission at that time was not interested in giving up any jurisdiction over any applications that came before a body in the town of Stratford, all right? Therefore, the April 17, 1991 amendment, the zoning commission forgot about flood prevention, modified 3.14 to make it a wetland protection ordinance. Unfortunately, they did it in a way which made the new Section 3.14 more restrictive on any construction activity within 50 or 75 feet of wetland area than were the actual wetland CAM and Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations. They didn't do a good job when they grabbed this jurisdiction. It was a power play. Exhibit 14 is a site plan of 1050 Wood End Road. And this is a shock, this is a shocking exhibit. This shows two red lines around the southern and western sides of the property. The red line closest to the property line is the 75-foot setback from tidal wetlands required by Section 3.14 of the zoning regulations. The other, more interior red line, shows where the parcel grading would need to be done in order to accommodate the 75-foot setback from tidal wetlands. As you can see from this exhibit, the enforcement by the Town of zoning regulations, 3.14, essentially results in a substantial portion of the parcel being rendered unusable. The sad thing is that there is no logical or justifiable reason for this to happen to the property owner, because as I have cited, more than adequate safeguards exist within the context of the state statutes, the local zoning regulations, and the local wetlands regulations to protect these valuable resources. Now Exhibit 15 is Jay's administrative comments. At the bottom, he says, "The major issue with 3.14 is that it prohibits any development within 50 feet of regulated areas, regardless of whether the Conservation Administrator Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission approves the permit in the regulated area. This essentially takes the judgment out of the hands of the wetlands professionals and makes it a decision of the zoning commission's zoning board of appeals and/or planning and zoning staff. This seems to be somewhat counterintuitive to an effective, efficient decision-making process." In this effect, in this effect, in this respect, excuse me, one could understand the rationale for eliminating 3.14 from the zoning regulations. Finally, I want to reference an August 17, 2018 memorandum from Christina Sanz Beto, the Stratford Conservation Administrator, Exhibit 16. In this memo, and in a subsequent memo from Tina dated August 23, 2018, Tina recommends against approval of my requested zone text amendment. However, she suggests that the answer to the applicant's need to go within 50 feet or 75 feet, as the case may be, would be for the applicant to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance of Section 3.14. In her memo, she says, "Correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not sure how the process of the variance works." Well, when I saw this memo, I met with Tina and explained to her how the variance process works. Simply stated, as most of you know, and as I explained to her, an applicant may be entitled to a variance of a zoning regulation if he can prove to the Board of Zoning Appeals that a hardship exists with respect to the property subject to the application. Hardship. Unfortunately, according to a long line of Connecticut cases, the hardship cannot be financial and it cannot be self-created. In a situation such as we have here, the site plan we are proposing was designed by an engineer hired by my client. Therefore, the need for the variance would be self-created. We created the design that requires the variance. It's self-created. Even if the Board of Zoning Appeals were to grant such a variance, if an appeal were taken to Superior Court by a neighbor, a competitor, or otherwise, the applicant would lose in court because he did not have a valid hardship. Additionally, in the 2015 case of ENF Associates versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Fairfield, the Connecticut Supreme Court held that a peculiar characteristic of a piece of property, which made it difficult to comply with the zoning regulations, did not justify the granting of a variance when the evidence established that the property would still have economic value if the variance were denied. So you apply for a variance. If your property still has economic value, if the variance is denied, the board can't grant the variance. Here, the property would still have economic value, although only half of it was usable, but it would still have economic value, albeit a significantly diminished value. Accordingly, a variance would not hold up in court under the circumstances of this case. Essentially, therefore, Section 3.14, as it currently exists, completely prohibits any construction activity within 50 feet of inland wetlands and 75 feet of tidal. And the court would not sustain a variance if the property has some economic value if the variance were denied. Because of this ENF case, obtaining a variance for this property that would stand up to court scrutiny is virtually impossible. This leaves the property owner, and in this case, the applicant, in a position where it has no adequate remedy at law to address a situation where it does not have full use of the property due to an unfair and overreaching regulation. 3.14 is unfair and overreaching. Even though adequate protections for the wetlands designed to be protected by 3.14 are otherwise available through the state CAM Act, the Stratford Coastal Area Management Regulations, the Stratford Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations, and the Stratford Inland Wetlands Regulations, there's all these regulations that protect these resources. Yet we need 3.14? I discussed the problem of obtaining a variance of Section 3.14 with Tina because of the comment that she had made in that memo. And she was not aware of the circumstances that I have just explained them to you, and she suggested that I make you aware of these circumstances when I make my presentation to you, which I have now done. The result of the enforcement by the Town of 3.14, with no practical recourse being available to the applicant to seek a variance of this regulation, puts the property owner in a position where it has no ability to use its property in a reasonable fashion. As I explained above, and with my submittals relative to the State of Connecticut CAM Act, the Stratford Coastal Area Management Regulations, the Stratford Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations, the Stratford Inland Wetlands and Water Course Regulations, there are already adequate safeguards in place, sufficient to protect both inland wetlands and tidal wetlands, so that the continued existence of 3.14 of the zoning regulations is no longer needed. I would ask that you act favorably with respect to my request for the zone text amendment, eliminating 3.14, together with an approval of the CAM application and the Erosion and Sediment Control Application, so that this valuable property can be recycled into a modern and benign use. Thank you.
Any other, any questions from the commission to Mr. Knott? Or do you guys have to wait? Mr. Henrick?
With the parking lot, the elevated parking lot, how high are you going to be bringing it up? I don't know, I didn't hear that, maybe I missed it?
The flood elevation is, has got to come up to, I believe, elevation 12, and right now it is somewhere around eight and a half, so we've got to bring it up three and a half feet.
And will you, so the entire parking area will be elevated to three and a half feet? Plus or minus?
Plus or minus, yeah.
And as far as the perimeter, how will you, I know you, I know you had talked about blocking around the ramp, will it, will it be similar around the perimeter?
The area over here closest to the building would be a riprap stone, and the rest of the area there would be, would just be sloped and then planted.
And then I would assume pitched towards the, towards the infiltrators?
Right, we have, we have high points in the corner here and then a split here, so we're coming to the basin here and a basin there.
How would you control erosion at those, those high points from rainwater or whatever else?
Well, again, it's going to be a gravel lot, and it's, it's very, very flat.
Well, it's, it's flat on the parking surfaces, but on the perimeter, you're sloped?
Well, we're planting it and then mulch.
Okay. And so you'll go, you'll, you'll drop that three and a half feet over how big of an area?
Well, again, we would have a two-to-one slope or two-and-a-half-to-one slope from the, the high point down to the natural grade.
So it'll be fairly steep?
Well, it wouldn't be mowable, that's why it would be planted.
Okay. And you feel confident that that would, you wouldn't have erosion issues?
Yeah, that's kind of a standard slope to work for a planted embankment.
Okay. All right. And then just, Mr. Knott, you had, you had referenced the Town of Stratford Inland Wetlands Water Course Regulations?
Yeah.
Can you, in these regulations, do they talk about construction in, in those regulated areas, or, I know you referenced it, and you referenced...
Yes, they do. Section, I'll tell you in a minute. Section... 10, on page 15, 16, 17, talks about the decision-making considerations, and it lists a half a dozen considerations that the commission is supposed to look at in order to make a determination as to whether an application should be granted or not. And if the commission makes a finding that the potential application has a significant, it has a potential significant impact on inland wetlands, it cannot grant the application if there are any feasible and prudent alternatives to that which is proposed. So let me say that again, because it is a tough burden for the applicant. If the commission makes an initial finding that the proposed activity may have a significant impact on inland wetlands, then the commission cannot ultimate, cannot ultimately grant the application if there is a feasible and prudent alternative to that which is being proposed. So for instance, if you're coming in with a four-lot subdivision, and a three-lot subdivision is a feasible and prudent alternative, they can't grant the four-lot subdivision if they have made a determination of significant impact. The inland wetlands regulations and inland wetlands approvals and denials are the most difficult approvals and denials to get overturned in Superior Court. The Superior Court gives great deference to the decision of the local wetlands agencies because they have professional staff that is familiar with the hydrology issues and all the technical, technical stuff having to do with the vegetation and drainage and all this other stuff. So those, and that's why I gave you the whole set of regulations, is because if you, if you look at them, they're nasty for an applicant to comply with.
And what would, what would trigger a, what would require the applicant to file an application with inland wetlands?
It depends on where you are in Stratford. Stratford has three setbacks, that's three regulated area setbacks. If you're in the south end of town, around here, if you're within 100 feet of inland wetlands, it's a regulated area, you've got to submit an application. Your, your proposed activity is now prohibited. You just have to submit an application and show them that you're going to put sufficient mitigation in place so that the wetlands are not damaged. In the north end of town, up near James Farm Road, Cut Spring Road, the setback is 250 feet. So if you're within 250 feet of wetlands, it's a regulated area, and you've got to come into wetlands. If you go way up the north end of town by Blueberry Pond, way up by Armstrong Avenue, Armstrong Road, up the end of James Farm Road, there's a 350-foot setback. So depending upon where you are in Stratford, the setback's either 100 feet, 250, or 350.
And, and then on, on the wood end frontage, is there, is there sidewalks currently there, or is it just, there's a property line?
There's no sidewalks.
No, okay. Okay. So, so the, the embankment would go pretty close to the edge of the road?
Jeff? Come up here. He's asking about the sidewalk side, the sidewalk side of the park.
The, the street side, well, all the grading would be within the property itself, and then you have a shoulder to the edge of the pavement, which would be untouched.
Okay. So that's what, about five feet or 10?
The shoulder is about, it varies, but it looks like it's between 10 and 12 feet. It's kind of meandering a little bit.
So it's a, the, the, the grade change wouldn't start to a significant difference back from the street?
Right, it would, it would be not within the town right of way, it would be on the property itself.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Salavy?
Okay, couple of questions. I actually find the, the tracing of the legislative history quite interesting. And it seems like, as I read this, that the prohibitions in 3.14 were pretty much restricted to buildings up until the 1991 revision.
That's right.
And so now with 1991 revision, just to shed it here, it says, "Including minor additions to existing buildings or detached accessory buildings such as garages and sheds, no pools, tennis courts, driveways, parking areas."
And changes in elevation, changes in grade.
And impervious surfaces or alterations of existing contours.
Yeah, that's, that's the big one. You can't do anything.
So that's really the crux of this problem as opposed to anything else. It's just that two areas about parking areas and...
And by the way, I apologize, I meant to say something before I completed my presentation. It may be obvious to you, but without the zone text amendment, the CAM and the Erosion and Sediment Control Applications can't fly. They need the zone text amendment in order for this project to work.
So let's talk about the, and I love the wording they use in the earlier version of it. It says, "The center line of a normally running stream or its bed." What are the characteristics of the wetland that's on the property? Is it a running stream, or is it a, just a marsh area? What is it, I haven't had a chance to go that deep into the property, how is it, what is it like?
It's a marsh area that's designated because of its elevation to be tidal in nature. So it's, it's vegetation, some moisture areas, but because of the elevation of the, of the wetlands that are below, they're below four feet, three and a half feet, they qualify as tidal wetlands as opposed to inland wetlands.
And so how close to that do you actually get?
To the wetlands themselves?
Yes. How, the edge, well, the edge of the, let me get the current text in front of me. Okay, so the parking area, which is probably what we're talking about, or the alteration of the existing... of the existing contour, how close to mean-high waterline of the water course do you actually get to?
Well, I think over in the southwest corner of the property is where the tidal wetlands are closest to our vegetation. I'm looking at SB 5, which is the landscape map. We're probably within 15, 20 feet.
See, I, I think one thing that's going to be difficult in evaluating this is that, obviously, there's an awful lot of statute that you provided as well, and I'm just going to have to evaluate by repealing the whole, the whole regulation essentially. Is there anything that's being left out that is not covered by any other statute?
Well, I can tell you that with respect to the sections that I asked to be amended, Jay taught me how to go through the zoning regulations and find any other reference to the word you're looking for in the zoning regulations. So I scanned the zoning regulations for 3.14, and that's where those other five areas popped up, okay? So as far as the zoning regulations are concerned, if you grant my zone text amendment, that'll clean up the zoning regulations. As far as whether there's any other, what, what are you, what are you asking? Is there any other?
Is, by repealing this, the 3.14, is there any other condition that is regulated by 3.14 that's not covered in the Connecticut statutes or the other inland wetlands regulations?
No, inland's covered by the inland wetlands regulations, and tidal is covered by CAM and Erosion and Sediment Control. You've got all the statutes in your folder.
And I got to look through them, yeah.
And we have a town attorney here tonight who can advise.
So is there any, considering that you're not trying to construct a building, which was the original intent, obviously expanded in 1991, would there be any other remedy that would suit your situation, such as pulling out the word parking area?
I don't know, I haven't thought about that. However, this public hearing is going to be kept open, and that's a very good question. And I will celebrate on that and get back to you. That may be a solution to the problem, if there is a problem. I don't think there is a problem, I think you should just grant my request. Of course, that's me.
That's your job, and this is my job. Thank you very much, Mr. Knott, I appreciate it.
Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Salhavy was actually going in the same line of thinking that I was. There's another portion of the zoning administrator's text that I want him to comment on, but before we get there, the idea that we have to make this text amendment and other to get this project through is really the, the crux of it. And there's no way of separating it from what I can gather, Mr. Knott, right?
True.
So in the way that Mr. Salhavy had answered, I would actually ask the same question. Even if we wanted to consider this project, what would be the minimum that we needed to do to that regulation to enable this project to happen without eliminating the entire statute?
I will get back to you on that, to Jay, on that as soon as possible, very, very quickly. It's a very good question.
Turning my attention to the zoning administrator, you had a number of concerns that were very defined if we eliminate the statute. I mean, most of it I understand, but could you elaborate as a counterpoint to what we should also be considering?
Well, you know, I think, you know, just, just because we have an inland wetlands commission does not mean that elected officials, the town of Stratford in general, could put forth a prohibition of particular development activities within a certain distance of environmental resources. You know, it's the town and our elected officials' responsibility to determine, you know, is the, are the protection of those resources more valuable than subsequent economic development that might follow without a regulation, and they're protecting that? And that's a question for the elected officials to answer, and it's a tough one. You know, I would say that there is an extensive amount of waterfront tidal wetlands, inland wetlands here in the town of Stratford. I mean, it wraps the entire, almost the entire stretch of Stratford, west to east, south to north, so, you know, while considering this application, you know, there are potential impacts that this may have townwide. You know, just to touch again on the comments from the conservation administrator as well, after the planning and zoning commission meeting, you know, we had talked about, you know, after that meeting, we had talked about, you know, her comments, and she had submitted some revised comments to me last Thursday that missed the commissioner mailer, so I apologize for not giving it to all you all for, for review. But if I may, I can read her, she had requested that I read her, her revised comments into the record here tonight. Dear Jay, I am following up on my original comments dated August 7, 2018, on the proposed text amendments submitted by Attorney Barry Knott on behalf of the Perkins Family Partnership LLC to conduct vehicle preparations at 1050 Wood End Road. I would not recommend that the zoning or planning commissions approve removal of Section 3.14 from the zoning regulations. While the inland wetlands commission does receive applications for regulated activities taking place within 100 feet of an inland wetland, the zoning commission, the zoning regulations are actually more restrictive in that they absolutely prohibit most development or activity within 50 feet of a wetland. I believe the regulation is a necessary safeguard, and I would actually like to amend the inland wetlands regulations to align with the zoning Section 3.14. The inland wetlands commission must render decisions on an application exclusively based on the probable effects of the wetlands and water courses. Planning and zoning, however, can regulate development based on a broader scope, protection of wetlands, as I had mentioned prior. For example, if an inland, for example, if an application that was approved by inland wetlands allowed development within 50 feet of an inland wetland, based on the fact that the proposed project would have no impact on a wetland or water course, planning and zoning may still decide to deny the application because the development may not be in accordance with the POCD. For example, the development might not align with long-term goals of the town. Section 3.14 would provide a strong legal basis for that denial. Furthermore, Section 3.14, and this is almost done, Section 3.14 applies to both inland wetlands and tidal wetlands. The town of, the town's inland wetlands commission does not have jurisdiction over tidal wetlands. Title wetlands are regulated by the state. In order for, in order to maintain local oversight on what takes place in and around environmentally sensitive tidal wetlands, one of Stratford's greatest natural resources, Section 3.14 should remain in place. This would ensure that the town can act in its own interest of protecting tidal wetlands via oversight of the planning and zoning commission. Again, I would like to point out that although the process may be difficult from a legal standpoint, it is possible for an applicant to apply for a variance for Section 3.14 if so desired.
I'd like to comment on that, if I may.
Hold on, are you done, Ms. Phillips?
No, actually, I was just going to ask you more. To, to follow up with a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Hervansky, if we, as a commissioner, just hypothetically, were to entertain that the current zoning regulations inland wetlands does present a cumbersome environment, as you had pointed out in your memo, and we wanted to improve it in some way, update it, all right, but not necessarily throw everything out arbitrarily, is there a way to streamline it such that the inland wetlands, as Mr. Knott had mentioned, who had the, and I don't know if I necessarily totally agree with you, but they are the experts on inland wetlands, they certainly have that authority? If we wanted to cede some more authority to the inland wetlands, but retain the ability, say, for the zoning commission, down to two agencies, that required a supermajority to over, what's the word, supersede, to, you know, to rescind or disagree with the inland wetlands, would that be a cumbersome, would that require, like, major changes in our regulations?
You know, without spending some time thinking about it, I, I don't know off the top of my head, you know, anytime you're, you know, considering the amending, or elimination, or creation of a new regulation, I mean, it takes weeks to really comb through the regulations to see what that domino effect has.
It makes sense.
It would be difficult for me to answer that tonight.
I, I can answer it.
Okay.
I can answer it if you would like. This commission doesn't have the authority, by supermajority or otherwise, to overrule the inland wetlands commission. You just don't have it within your enabling authority. Your, your enabling authority gives you jurisdiction over zoning issues, theirs over inland wetlands. So there's no mechanism by which, by which the zoning commission can overrule the inland wetlands commission. Tina, in her memo, suggests that she may go to the wetlands commission and suggest to them that they modify their regulations to put in a 50-foot prohibition, as opposed to a 50-foot rate. Right now, they got a, right now, they got a 100-foot regulated area. She's talking about going to them and asking them to put a 50-foot prohibited area in addition to the 100-foot regulated area. The wetlands commission doesn't have the authority to prohibit any activity within the regulated area unless certain findings are made that are set forth in the wetlands regulations. They can't prohibit activity, they can regulate activity. Now, as far as this commission's authority to do the right thing by an application, you've got that authority right now. We're here tonight on a CAM application. You've got the authority within the regulations that I have, have handed to each of you under the Soil and Erosion Control and the CAM regulations. You can say no to this site plan. You don't like where this, that, and the other thing is located, come back with another site plan. You've got the jurisdiction to deal with these kinds of issues under the regulations that are already in effect, that's my point.
I, I don't have any other questions.
Any further questions from the rest of the commission? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. Anybody who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Anybody in opposition? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close by Mr. Salhavy's. Yes, we are, okay, right, okay. Withdrawal by Mr. Salhavy on his motion, motion to table. Motion by Mr. Salhavy, second by Ms. Phillips, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you, there gentlemen. Mr. Hendrick, would you like to read five, six, and seven?
Number five, text amendment, petition of 608 Ferry Boulevard Associates LLC seeking to amend the zoning regulations by creating a new subsection 29 titled Adaptive Reuse Housing Zone. Number six, 608 Ferry Boulevard, petition of 608 Ferry Boulevard Associates LLC seeking to change the zone from a CA zone to the proposed Adaptive Reuse Housing Zone. And number seven, 608 Ferry Boulevard, petition of 608 Ferry Boulevard Associates LLC seeking a site plan review approval under the proposed subsection 29 of the zoning regulations to convert existing commercial space to a 24-unit affordable housing development pursuant to subsection 8-30G of the Connecticut General Statutes on a property located in the CA zone. A coastal site plan review has also been submitted for administrative review.
Is the petitioner present, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. What I just passed out is not a copy of the zoning application, I will explain what it is momentarily. I'm Attorney Tim Hollister from Hartford, representing the applicant, 608 Ferry Boulevard LLC. The principal of the LLC is Baragio Barone, who is here. My co-counsel is Stratford Attorney Robert Rosati, and our development team is Professional Engineer Jim Swift, Architect Robert Tobin, and Traffic Engineer Kermit Hua. Note on procedural compliance, a copy of the proposed regulation and the zone change map were filed several weeks ago with the town clerk. We sent the required letter to a butters, which Attorney Rosati has to turn in. Notices were published, and the coastal site plan application was referred to the DEP as required. Now, I've just given you three items, the first is just a summary outline of what we're going to say tonight, so you can follow along. Second item is, has two parts to it, what's called supplemental materials. We had, there were some issues raised by one of the town staff about parking, and we put together some additional statistical information justifying the 1.5 spaces per unit that are in our parking regulation. Now, the, the thicker multi-tab that I just passed out is, is really informational, it doesn't really have to do with the site plan, but it, it is a compilation of statistics and articles. This has become a sort of a standard part of my own presentation when I represent applicants in Section 830G applications. So this is national, state, regional, and town of Stratford information about the current demand for rental housing for households of moderate or, or low income. And I will tell you that the Stratford-specific information, which I'm going to refer to in my remarks, is a tab D, but a lot of this is, is your own information or information compiled, where Stratford is part of a region. Some of it talks about what I'll call dispelling myths that, that affordable housing depresses property values or overburdens the schools. So there's real information here, very valuable information, that addresses some of the questions that may come up from the commission or the public. So this is for your future reading. I actually don't anticipate that we're going to close the hearing tonight, so this is a resource for you to look at between now and when we finish the hearing.
Excuse me, Mr. Hollister?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I was waiting for Mr. Hendrick to finish, and I realized that I lost my opportunity. I want to let both you and Mr. Rosati know that I am an abutter to this property. I have discussed it with our attorney, Pat Sullivan. As long as you both agree that there'll be, we have agreed that there's no conflict on my behalf. If you both agree to that, then I will continue to sit and we'll go forward.
Okay, well, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have, I assure you, you know, and the town attorney has told you, the standard is whether you have a, a personal or financial interest in the outcome of the application. That is an evaluation that you and the town attorney need to make. I don't have any, any information one way or the other, but if you've made that determination, put that in the record, then that's, that's fine with me.
That's why I mentioned it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
So probably the most important thing to keep in mind about this particular application is that it is reuse of an existing building. There is really no new construction that is proposed. We are taking some, some of the existing architecture and making it more residential, making it more in tune with the surrounding neighborhood, but there is no new building proposed here, and that's a fact that we will come back to on a number of occasions. So the property is six point, excuse me, .64 acres, and what we've put together, and again, this is sort of the standard approach that we've developed over the years to Section 830G applications, is a, a three-part application. Number one, part number one is a, a new zone called, which we call Adaptive Reuse Housing Zone. Second is to rezone the subject property to this Adaptive Reuse Housing Zone, and third is the site plan and coastal site plan application. Now, the regulation, if you have the, the July 12th application package somewhere nearby, the regulation that's proposed is Tab 9, and I'm not... the regulation that's proposed is tab nine, and I'm not going to go through it in detail, but I will say this. Number one is, it is modeled both in form and substance on the existing town of Stratford zoning regulations in terms of standards, but we have, as we always do, tailored it specifically to this site. It is a site-specific regulation, and we do that for several reasons. The first is, we don't want you to have to consider the applicability of this regulation to other sites within the town of Stratford. So, if you've looked at the draft regulation, you see it is only applicable to parcels between .5 and 1.0 acres that front on both Ferry Boulevard and Riverview Place. There's only one parcel in the town of Stratford that meets that qualification, and it's the one that you're considering tonight. So, we do that very intentionally. We've done this in more than 50 times in other towns, and it seems to sort of relieve the need to think about townwide implications of the regulation. If the commission were to choose in other contexts to take the regulation and expand it, that is your prerogative, but tonight, you only need to worry about this regulation and this site. The second reason we do this is, we're trying to combine the standards, the dimensions, the density, the height, everything that will govern the permitted use with the rules for affordability. And we looked at some of the regulations that exist elsewhere in the town of Stratford that touch on affordable housing, and we just didn't see the combination of both the building rules and affordability rules that we felt should be implemented in considering this property. So, in doing this, we are following what we believe is good planning practice. I think the, one of the town staff comments said, "Well, is this arbitrary?" I would say, "No, it's intentional." It's very intentional because you want to know, the town deserves to know exactly what could be permitted on this property, and we have defined it right down to the unit, to the foot, to the dimension, to achieve that purpose. You may ask why, I know you have a regulation, which we have exempted ourselves from, that says that all affordable housing applications should be a so-called special case or special permit, and the, if you think about it, the 830G standard, which I understand you've had some applications recently that dealt with that, is that if the applicant proposes a site plan that will not create a public health or safety concern, then the commission is obligated to approve the application unless it finds that there is a public health and safety issue that clearly outweighs the need for more affordable housing within the town. A special permit, by definition, is a highly discretionary review by the commission. So, 830G is essentially a non-discretionary application process, and the special permit is very discretionary, and the two just have always appeared to me to be apples and oranges, and therefore, we never propose this type of application under a special permit or special case. Now, the proposed residential program here, again, this is essentially taking, re-dividing the floor plan, the interior floor plan of an existing building, is 24 units, seven efficiencies, which means small one-bedroom, 15 one-bedrooms, and two two-bedrooms. So, 24 units total, and of that total, eight will be subject to long-term maximum income and monthly rent limits, and then 16 units will be market rate. Now, it's very important, because I think this is often understood, the perception, perhaps in the public may be, that this is federally subsidized, very low income. It isn't. And by the way, it's section 830G, it happens to be Title VIII of the general statutes. It has nothing to do with the federal Section VIII program. But, let me just show you, share with you the maximum rents and the maximum household qualifying income to show you that this is really moderate income. This is so-called workforce housing. So, in the one-bedrooms and the efficiencies, we will have two units at 80% of median income, maximum rent $1,087 per month, maximum household income $56,000 per year. One-bedroom at so-called 60% of median, maximum monthly rent, and by the way, these rents are without utilities, maximum monthly rent $885, maximum income $42,000. Two-bedrooms, 60% units at $1,116 maximum rent, maximum household income $50,600, and then the two-bedroom units at 80%, $1,376 per month, with a maximum household income of $67,500. So, this is, this is households where there are, they're working families, they earn salaries, that are, put them in the category of moderate income. The market rate rents we expect will be certainly above the 80% level that I just outlined. Now, with regard to the need for more lower-cost housing, again, I've given you this informational package, which you can read at your convenience, but one way the state measures as towns' lower-income housing stock is the so-called 10% list. It's not really a measure of need, but it's a way for the state to define who, which towns are subject to this procedure and which are not. There are 169 towns, 31 of them are exempt. Stratford is not among the exempt, because its percentage, as measured, is 6.2%. I believe, one time, 12 to 15 years ago, it was as high as 7 or 8%, but it's actually declined somewhat. But, if you look at the package I gave you tonight, the Stratford-specific data, the median rent in Stratford is approximately $1,200 per month. So, all of the units here, except for the 180% two-bedroom unit, will be below the median rent. But, the other statistic that I think is important is that the Partnership for Strong Communities in Hartford has calculated that more than 50% of the people in Stratford who rent pay more than 30% of their income on housing. And the rule of thumb is, if that is your situation, you are spending less on other necessities like medical care, food, and other love-lifes necessities. So, we believe there is, I'm not going to say that there is no affordable housing in Stratford, because there is, but there's certainly a need for more, both for existing residents of Stratford and for those who might choose to move across municipal borders. So, with that introduction, we're going to follow the presentation summary that I gave you. First, I'm going to have Attorney Rosati walk you through the brief history of the permits for this particular, the particular property, and how we ended up with the application that we have. And then, Mr. Swift, our engineer, will take you through the existing conditions and the proposed site plan. Mr. Hua will go through the traffic, and then Mr. Tobin will finish up with the architecture. So, I'm just going to let them come to the podium in the order that we've spelled out.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Rosati. I'm an attorney here in Stratford with my father, Thomas Rosati. Our office is at 3241 Main Street. Before I forget, I did hand Ms. Phillips the mailings, the certificate of mailings. I also, before I get into history, want to submit a letter I received, and Mr. Abansky received, from Waterfront and Harbor Management. That just confirms they have no objection to this proposal. And I believe last week, the Planning Commission considered this, and also has a recommendation of approving this. So, as far as the history of this property and the location, as you all know, 608 Ferry Boulevard is at the corner of Riverview Place. It was originally an RS4 zone. Up until 1961, it was, always had that RS4 designation. It's currently surrounded by RS4 and residential uses. In 1961, it was changed to the CA district, and in 1962, a commercial building was constructed for office space. Then, in 1996, the building received a special case approval to operate as a church in the CA zone. Now, as we all know from driving by busy Ferry Boulevard, since that time that it was a church, this property has had a spotty record. There have been failed commercial uses, there have been multiple foreclosures. The property now is vacant and disrepair. There was an attempt to convert it back in 2006 to residential apartments. It wasn't an 8-30G development, but that was an attempt in the CA district. That was denied by this commission in 2006. Then, in 2008, there was a special case approval in the CA zone to use this property as a daycare, but that failed. That was certainly not the highest and best use of the property. In 2015, there was, and this is the most recent history, a special case approval to convert the building in the CA zone to nine residential units. That approval expired. That's the prior owner who realized there was just no market for those oversized apartments. The project failed, and that owner basically walked away from it. The property has remained vacant and disrepair for over 10 years. Now, our client tonight, Mr. Beagio Barone, last year, he purchased the property. Mr. Barone grew up in Stratford, he's a local boy, homeowner, business owner, successful business owner, by the way, here in Stratford. He's decided to further invest in Stratford by purchasing, purchasing this property, and he recognizes the need for housing, and this property lends itself to the residential development. Unfortunately, there just isn't a market for the commercial development for this property. The residential development does fit into the neighborhood. The problem with going forward and developing it as a, as a residential use is that it, unfortunately, falls just outside the TOD overlay district, I think a block short, so we can't make that application, which would have been similar to the other Ferry Boulevard The last residential approval, as I said, expired, and the bedroom equivalency cap in our regulations 5.3.5 forces us to use the 8-30G statute to develop this property for the residential apartments. There are no more units available per 5.3.5 in this neighborhood, and I did confirm that with Mr. Abansky. There were recent suggestions to modify or abolish 5.3.5 so that cap didn't exist in our regulations. There was talk back and forth about removing that would bring us more in compliance with our plan of conservation development, that those talks have not evolved yet. So, we're stuck. We're stuck with 5.3.5. It's still in effect, so there's just absolutely no other way to develop this property residentially. Residential is the intended use of this property, and the way we are proposing to develop it is the right way to develop 8-30G properties in this town.
Good evening. My name is Jim Swift. I'm a professional, licensed professional engineer and a licensed landscape architect with offices in Shelton, Connecticut. As you can see from the aerial, that's the existing building in the center of the site. You can clearly see Ferry Boulevard and Riverview Place down the bottom of the site. Showing you this to give you a sense of what the condition of the site, existing site, is at the moment. We have an existing parking lot that's towards the rear of the site, that's badly overgrown. It was partially gravel, partially pavement. And we also have a significant amount of pavement all along the Riverview Place street line. It's basically been paved from the street all the way up to the building, and we've got a lot of existing perpendicular parking spaces that back out onto, onto Riverview. And again, for the record, there's no wetlands in the parcel, and there's no wetlands in the nearby area. We have a survey, which has been submitted, A2 survey, that's for your records. This is the site plan, and what I've done is, I have all the site plans with all the data on it, but I've also printed out an enlargement so that you could, the commission could see the plan a little bit better as I speak. As was stated, there is no modification to the existing building footprint. You can see that the existing building, as it comes to the ground, is in a darker color, but the actual building, as it rises up in the air, is the slightly darker color up on top. So, we're not changing that portion of the building, that's going to remain the same, but we're going to make significant changes underneath the building. Our main entry to the building is in this location, so we're going to be doing some reconstruction with ramping and stairs so that we can make sure that we can get our handicap accessibility up there, up to, up to the new code. This is also where the elevator is located, by the way. So, everything is kind of focused in here and making sure everybody can get into that spot. Also, underneath the building, we're adding a dedicated trash area. It's an enclosed area, fenced enclosed area, back in this corner, so we get, we're going to hide that a little bit. Works by rollout bins, so we think that's going to be, that's going to be fine. And we're organizing the striping. Of course, there's a lot of columns that come down, and the striping that you see there is done with those columns in mind, so we can get an accurate parking count, so we know exactly what's going on in there. The existing gravel parking lot in the back of the site here actually gets a bit smaller. It's very close to the property line in this location, and what we're doing, and if you were to look at the plans closely, you could see that the existing curb line comes very close to the property line. We're going to, we're going to bring that closer to our building, get a little more green space in there, so they have a more consistent, about an eight-foot planting area in there, more or less. All of the, all of the pavement and the parking that extend out to Riverview Place, we're going to take out. We're going to remove it. All of it, it's ugly, it's not functioning very well. And the only thing that we're going to leave in place there is, we are going to have the two, of course, access drives. These are in-and-out drives in two different locations. So, we're really going to clean that area up, especially up in here where there's this, if you were to refer back to the existing condition, this is all pavement in this area, so we're going to take all that pavement out there. We are installing concrete walks out to the street. Previously, that was all just pavement. People just walked right out to the street. We'll be organizing that a little bit better with sidewalks, and of course, that is the emergency egress from the building out to the street. You're going to notice that there's no proposed light poles shown on this plan, and the reason for that is, there's more than sufficient lighting that's going to happen underneath the building, the soffit lighting, so we don't need, and we're not extending that far out from underneath this, this area, so that when we light brightly underneath that soffit, we can cover these areas without having to put additional poles out there. That's just inherently dark sky compliant, and we think it's going to be very friendly to the neighbors, because we're not going to have any high poles in that location. For the grading plan, of course, the same, same thing, this also functioned as the erosion control plan. There's not a lot of site work, but there is enough to mandate the requirement of erosion control plan, and some of those notes and details are shown on this drawing. And here's the enlargement. Site's very flat, pitching slightly towards the river, a little high here, extending in that direction. We're comfortably outside the FEMA flood zone, so FEMA flood zone is, is nothing to do with this site. But, we do have some stormwater issues. But we do have some stormwater issues. Right now, as the existing site does not have any storm drain system to speak of, and in fact, it has none. All the water just runs out into Riverview Place down in this low area down here. So as we change the nature of what's paved and what's pervious out there, we're, we have a net reduction in impervious surfaces. So just, just by its very nature, right off the bat with the work we're doing here, we're reducing the discharge of stormwater from the site just by having more, more green space there. Of course, having said that, we still have the MS4 management plan that the town has, managed by, by the engineer John Casey. I've been in contact with him on, on this and other sites, and we, we, we know what we have to do in this case for redevelopment with coverage of forty percent or more. The standard is to get a half an inch of the water back into the ground. That, that rainfall is to be detained on, on the site. So to that end, what we did was we did some, some soils testing out there. We got a machine out there just to look around, make sure that what was in the ground was, we didn't have any high groundwater or anything, any problems like that. The test came out very good. And so what we did was we put in an underground stormwater infiltration system towards the back, and that's to take care of that, that half inch of runoff that the MS4 is going to require. It also has another benefit. As I said before, all the water used to just flow right out on the Riverview Place. We're going to do some very minor grading in here for a couple of catch basins and put those into those infiltrators, and the net effect of that is, is we're going to reduce significantly any water that comes out into Riverview. Most of it's going to go into the infiltrators, but what we're also doing in effect is where water used to just come off this corner of the property, we'll sort of be using the parking lot almost as a surface parking lot. I don't know if you want to call it detention or not, but we'll puddle the parking lot before we start sending too much water out onto, out onto Riverview Place. And it's not significant. It's not deep. It's not going to cause the, the residents any problem. Like I said, it's going to be more in the form of, of a puddle. Also on these issues, you do have some correspondence from Mr. Goucher at the DEP. We received a couple of his emails. Both of those are in your packages. I did speak to him about those issues. He had some questions in his second email. I confirmed with him that all the issues he raised were addressed in the design. He seemed satisfied. He didn't have any further questions for me on those issues, so we have touched base with, with him on, on that. The existing building is, is connected to the, the town sanitary sewer system. That, that system is in place. Of course, that's the, the brown line out on, in the street. We do have existing water service connection in this location. That connection at the moment is only domestic. We will be adding a second, larger line in there because we'll be taking the building and sprinkling it. So we do need to, to put a larger line, larger, a fire connection system, line out to, out to the street. And again, just for the record, all other utilities exist at the site. All the other utilities are, can support the proposal as we propose it, electrical, communications, so on and so forth. Landscape plan, again, a larger version of that plan. And again, the most, most striking thing about, about the site design and the landscape plan is what we're doing to Riverview Place. You know, if I just flip back to this aerial for a second, and you see what the streetscape is there on, on Riverview Place, and then back to the landscape plan, you can, you can see it's a significant difference. We are proposing three shade trees along Riverview Place. Again, the green space all along the street curbing, and the curbing is new, of course, since we're taking all that pavement out. We're also proposing some evergreen low hedging in areas where we're adjacent to the parking lot. You know, it's kind of a standard thing just to hide the cars, not completely, but just high enough to take, just to give them a little bit of cover. As we come around to the back of the site, and again, we come back to that additional green space that we put in to our neighbor to the, to the east, we'll be providing a series of, a complete line of arborvitae all along, all along this line. And that's going to complement well. There's, there's two very nice existing maples on the property line. Those will be saved. We'll, we'll keep those. And one more shade tree back in the corner here. If you, if you were to look in the overall scheme of things, there's not much for shade trees back there, so we added one there. There was some staff comment, and I think that it's come up that, and I, and I think Bob Tobin is going to speak about it a little bit on, on the aesthetic of the front of the building. And just for the record, we, we understand that this is a important facade, important streetscape, and we wouldn't have any objection to reviewing this for additional landscaping out towards the front. And with that, I'll turn it over to...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kermit Hua. I'm the traffic engineer for this site. I'm a registered professional engineer in Connecticut and a nationally certified professional traffic operations engineer. I have over twenty-one years of experience in traffic engineering. As you can see, this is the overall location map in relation to the adjacent area. This is Riverview Place, and the main intersection is Riverview Place and Ferry Boulevard. So that is one of the intersection we, I analyzed for this study. The other intersection I analyzed is the intersection of Riverview, Riverview, I'm sorry, Ferry Boulevard and what's called a Barnum Avenue cutoff, which is essentially the east or northbound Route One approach that goes under the highway, you know, intersects with Ferry Boulevard to the northeast. So what was done for this traffic study is we collected the traffic counts in September 2017 for the weekday morning and afternoon peak hours, and then we analyzed the, these data for the two intersections and add future driveways. In terms of net impact of this project from these twenty-four apartments, we are looking at seven trips during the weekday morning peak hour and nine trips during the weekday afternoon peak hour. As you know, Ferry Boulevard is a one-way road going in a northeast direction, so all the traffic exiting the site will have to turn right at the intersection of Ferry Boulevard and Riverview Place, and all the traffic entering the site will make a right turn from Ferry Boulevard towards Riverview Place. Now, this table shows you the level of service after this project is constructed. If you look at the ladder grade in the LOS columns, we are looking at A, B, A, A, B, B, you know, the worst is C, which is highly favorable in an urban area like Stratford. So in terms of traffic capacity, we have no constraints whatsoever at the two analyzing intersections from this development. In terms of parking, there are some IT Institute of Transportation Engineer criteria for parking specifically for developments with small units with, you know, mostly one-bedroom units. The IT recommendation in the document that Attorney Hollister just submitted tonight recommends one point one-three spaces per unit for any development that has, on average, fewer than one point five bedrooms per unit. In our case, even we assume the efficiencies are one-bedroom units. Our average number of bedroom for these twenty-four units are one point oh-eight, so that's much lower than the IT threshold, the one point five bedroom units. Again, we are proposing thirty-seven spaces parking units, thirty-seven parking spaces as opposed to if you times one point one-three times twenty-four. The IT requirement is twenty-eight spaces, so we are nine spaces over the IT recommended parking spaces. Separately, in that document we just submitted, we also looked at some other similar developments in the area in, you know, Fairfield County, Stanford, Darien, and one in Derby. And typically, especially for small studio or one apartment developments, the parking demand is really not that high. The survey from these four existing development indicates that the parking demand varies from zero point seven-five to one point one spaces per unit for these kind of one-bedroom units, mostly one-bedroom or mostly, mostly one-bedroom and efficiency developments. So that is parking. Sidelines, we also looked at the sideline conditions for vehicles exiting Riverview Place, make it, making a right turn onto Ferry Boulevard. The existing condition is about, it is well over five hundred feet if you're looking west along Ferry Boulevard, so that meets DOT requirement for sidelines. Pedestrians, as you know, there is an existing sidewalk on the southeast side of Ferry Boulevard, and that will remain. So if people wish to use that sidewalk, walking north toward the, towards the signalizing intersection under the highway or walking west towards the signalizing intersection, then crosses, use the crosswalks to cross-street, those will be available for pedestrians. So in conclusion, is my professional opinion as a traffic engineer is, when it comes to traffic impact from these twenty-four unit, there will be no health or safety impact from this development. That's all I have, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Are you the last presenter? One more? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Robert Tobin. My firm is Robert L. Tobin Architect. I live in Stratford at 115 Wigbaum Lane and have lived in town for twenty years now. I'm an architect, registered in the state of Connecticut with over fifty years of experience in the profession in both corporate, commercial, and residential work throughout North America and South America. Locally, several of the projects I've worked on are the Shurk Beach Little League Pavilion that was just built in the last several years, fourteen-unit apartment building in Paradise Green above the subway in Alden Rehab Center, which is unbuilt currently. The mobile station conversion at Fenton and Main Street was one of my projects. And lastly, the VNA headquarters, which we're all glad to see got redone on Main Street as it's improved the quality of Main Street drastically by the VNA accepting and moving into that facility. As you're aware, this existing building is currently vacant. The building, surprisingly enough, is a post-modernistic architecture design, meaning that the elements of the architecture of this building have, were upgraded several years ago so that the concrete is not just poured concrete, it's architecturally textured concrete, which has taken extra efforts to pour and form, and bluestone copings added to it, and the roof canopy itself is an architectural design element to enhance the structure of the building. Previous to the building was just a flat-faced stucco building that came down to the ground much like a warehouse, so improvements have been made to the building to enhance its exposure. And the end canopy of the building has this structure involved in it, which is actually a statement of a piece of art which forms the entry into the building. That's, that is not meant for signage, not a backdrop for signage. That was designed as its structural support for the canopy and as a gateway entry to the building, which was a form that was quite used often in modern, post-modern architecture design. So I can look at the building and see the building totally different than somebody else might see the building, and once you understand what you're looking at, it's really something quite nice. One of the things we had, lastly, you know, the building is now a stucco finish, and that was done to mimic the concrete design, you know, of the footing and the porch work in the front. The windows are simple aluminum frame design in a storefront because the building was originally, you know, modified to become a commercial office building or some sort of commercial space. The windows, you know, also work with this architectural concept. As you're aware, there's a parking deck structure here which has no access to it, so has no practical use whatsoever, other than the fact that the birds are living up there and use it as a feeding ground. The structure itself is a mixed use of masonry and steel columns with open webbar choice, totally compatible with an adaptive reuse. In this case, the building is a reuse of an adaptive reuse from the existing commercial structure and parking deck, which has been vacated, and converting it into needed residential space for older couples downsizing and millennials, which we feel there's a big need for in the Stratford area. The materials of the interior spaces are going to be very simple. They're going to be very similar to any residential house that I'm building in Fairfield County. We're having granite, you know, granite countertops, plywood cabinetry, porcelain tile floors and bathrooms and entryways. The building will be upgraded to the current 2018 building code, which is coming in force in October first. Right now, the building is stripped down to bare walls, so we're going to be re-insulating the entire structure for the comply. The building currently is in compliant because of the compliance with ADA requirements because of the elevators and the handicap ramp that were added as a portion, as, as part of the initial design renovation several years ago. And the oak layouts of the apartments themselves are more of an open plan layout that many of my clients are asking for, in that the kitchens open up into the living room and create great spaces, and the windows, because of their commercial nature and design, are quite large. And so that's going to make the apartments lighter and airier, and the apartments, because of the, the fact that they're raised up, offer views of, over the buildings and out over the neighborhood, which you don't quite commonly find in a residential quarter, quarter acre zone lot. You're usually looking at the next door house twenty feet away, thirty feet away. Maybe you're next door, your rear neighbor's seventy-five feet away, but in this case, you're actually looking out over two or three hundred feet before you see the next structure. So these apartments will actually be quite nice. And though some of the apartments do face ninety-five, inevitably, whenever you've lived in a facility or in a building that is near a train track, near a bridge that raises up or, you know, that has crossing guards, crossing gates and things like that, the bells and the whistles and the traffic fade away over time, and you can certainly look out over and, you know, so I don't see ninety-five as being a big deterrent to living and renting these, these units. The fire safety in this building is going to be totally upgraded. We've met with Brian Lampard, the building, or fire marshal, and discussed the total sprinkling of the, of the, underneath the garage and all of the units, so the building will be totally sprinkled. And that is something that we probably could have avoided doing, but we think it makes sense to do, and there would have been ways to reframe and partition the building that we could have eliminated the fact that we didn't have to sprinkler it, but we're planning on going with what the fire marshal recommends and sprinkling the building rather than zoning it into smaller compartments. As far as energy efficiency and sustainable features of this building, the building is being brought up to today's energy standards, I said, under the new, new building code that's coming out. The building, from a sustainability standpoint, will, would receive high green ratings if we were going for... we were going for a green rating on the building, and it's a residential use located near transportation, there's a bus route directly in front of us. It has access to I-95. In the future, it's going to have access to a full 95 entrance and on-ramp, both in a north-south direction, and by the way, we anticipate when that happens, that the local traffic coming along Ferry Boulevard itself will be, tend to be more towards the 95 side and less on the Milford side, because there'll be less traffic going down on the right-hand side up against our building to get to Milford. It'll be local traffic going to Milford, not traffic gutting to go on to 95 on the Milford The building itself has a green rating because it has multiple residential units in one site. That, that's a point that you would use if you're trying to go after a building green sustainability rating. In addition to that, an adaptive reuse of an existing structure has green rating points too, which allow, because you're not taking a building and throwing it out, you're taking an existing building and reusing it for the most effective use that you poss, and highest use that you possibly can, in this case being residential, then, which happens to suit our needs in this particular situation. And the energy savings of this building will also work because of its entire energy package that we're putting in it, as far as the insulation and what have you. The units will have individual heat pump controlled HVAC units, so each unit will have its own control over their HVAC, and so it's not like we're going to be air conditioning an entire building, or heating an entire building without individual controls, and it allows, so that has an energy savings allocation to it for being a, an apartment unit with that type of controls. The amenities, as I indicated, we have bicycle racks, storage or bicycle parking, so people could park their bikes on the ground, and as well as, that's one of the elements that people look at for, you know, green sustainability, is the ability to have that as an option. Stratford is becoming more urban in its downtown environment, and that downtown environment will then lead to more people possibly walking in on bicycles, and we're certainly close enough to the TOD district that getting around town on a bicycle on a Saturday afternoon to do some light shopping or go to a small store would certainly work. We have ease of, again, ease of access to public transportation with the bus loop coming right by our property, which confirms, you know, returns back, so you could take the bus to the train station if you wanted to, and adequate, and, and we're also providing adequate storage, both within the units and on each apartment floor. There will be additional storage. The staff had made several comments. I've actually addressed the first issue, which was the property's high visibility from 95, and our attempts, you know, assisting that comment is, A, the architectural design stands for itself, and what we're looking at doing is modifying it with some copings and, and, and parapets along the roof to make it more emulate the VNA building that we have on Main Street. So the buildings will be very similar in character when we're finished, except the building on Ferry Boulevard will have higher quality exterior finishes because of its architectural design. The second area that the response, I wanted to respond to was the front patio area was considered that should be used as common space. There were apartments on the first floor area immediately behind that patio area, and we were looking at those, that patio area being actually patios for the apartments that are on that floor. So when you walk every apartment on the first floor, it butts that patio, has access, has a door access to that patio. So we were looking at possibly putting up some screening between the units, so that people actually had private patios, and we certainly wouldn't want that to be a public space and have somebody walking by your bedroom and kitchen and what have you. So use of that space as a public area doesn't make a lot of sense. Additionally, I discussed the canopy structure and its purpose for, for what it is, as far as a design element that softened up the edges of the building from its original design as a warehouse or an office building. And it doesn't make practical sense to be using the canopy as a flowerbed to hang flowers and vines and things down to create this screen in front of the building, because it's impractical to get up and maintain the, the plantings that might hang down and drape down because of, A, safety reasons, and the second floor unit apartments look out over the, that roof canopy, and you certainly wouldn't want, we don't want to encourage people to be going out their windows to, you know, do activities on the top of the roof, and we certainly, roof canopy, and if we start planting up there, people are going to start thinking it's public space, and it doesn't, it's not a practical use for that space. There was also a comment that both ground-fixed and building-mounted access lighting along Ferry Boulevard should be considered, and as again, as I spoke about the first floor, the unit, apartments units on the first floor, we wouldn't want to have any lighting on the exterior of those units controlled as part of a design element, because if you're trying to go to bed at night, you certainly don't want lights shining out in your, outside your unit that light up the facade of the building. And if we did do any lighting, it would be up on, on the second floor above the canopy, and putting lighting up there is a bad idea because it, it, it's light polluting in its nature, it, it has the connotation almost of a sign, and people are looking, where's, where's the sign that goes between the lights, or where's the sign that's missing under the lights? And I just didn't feel that putting any lighting on the building was, you know, was, would add to the attractiveness. And as we talked about with the trees, if we planted, planted, you know, three or four trees or so along the Ferry Boulevard right of way, that would certainly soften the impact of the building of the softer trees and the, the hard face of the concrete and the stucco facade behind, which is the quality of the architecture. And certainly from 95, driving by at 65 miles an hour, I've done this, you're going to be, you're more concerned about making the sweeping curve to the left to get on to the bridge, and once there's an entrance ramp added there, you, you know, from a driving standpoint, you certainly will not be looking at the building, you're going to be looking at cars entering on, up onto the ramp, on the entry ramp. And so I think that the addition of trees along Ferry Boulevard will certainly help the project visually, and then, as I said, this building will be very similar in nature to the VNA building, which I know everybody in town really has enjoyed. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Chairman, we will stop there. I know the public has been waiting patiently, so that's, we wanted to get our initial presentation on the floor, which we've done, so we will yield at this point.
Do we need a two-minute break? Are we all set, or anybody want to just keep on going? Good.
Can we take a few minutes for question? Just want, a couple of questions I want to ask the applicant.
Okay, well, so do I. Mr. Rosati, maybe we can start by directing them to you, and then you can field who, who should answer the questions properly, or Mr. Hollis, or whatever. Because I know I, I have a half a dozen myself. Mr. Sohabe, you want to go first, or do you want me to go first? Thank you. Can you explain to us again why this application came in this way versus a street market value apartments?
Bob, you want to take that one? Yes, for three reasons. Number one, we fall outside the, I think a block short of the TOD overlay, so that's not an option. Number two, any other residential approval has now expired. The last one that, that was approved, that's now expired. That was a special case approval. And because of our section 5.3.5, that's still in existence, it, this area in town has reached its limit of bedroom equivalency units, and, and Mr. Abansky can correct me. And because of that limit being reached, there is no opportunity to develop this property for residential use, other than to bring an 830G affordable development. So it's the only avenue to develop residentially.
Okay, then, Mr. Abansky, why is that the only avenue that they can come? Is it, just so the public understands exactly why we're, you know, going for affordable housing versus just straight market value?
As Attorney Rosati stated, you know, because of section 5.3.5, a regulation that was adopted, I believe, in the seventies, there were 100 bedrooms given to all neighborhoods in the town of Stratford, and there was a cap of 604.5 bedrooms allotted townwide. So wherever those units went, whether it was in lordship, which those all went in the very first few years because of development, I think raced down towards the water, you know, I, and I think it was when I started working here in 2016, the final 12 bedrooms were, were allotted, allotted for and approved. So therefore, any development of, let's see, what is it, it was since lowered, any development eight units or more of residential development require a special case under section 5.3, and it would be subtracted from those allotted 604.5 units, which are now all gone. So until that regulation is either amended, the allotment is increased, or that regulation is revised, if anyone wants to build, any developer wants to build more than, eight units or more in town, it would require either an affordable housing, eight-830G application, or it would have to be in a zone that's exempt from section 5.3.5, such as the TOD zone, overlay district, I should say.
We, we did consider all that, and we waited and hoped. We waited and hoped that something would happen with 5.3.5, and we waited and hoped that the TOD would be extended. My client can't wait any longer.
Okay, then, the next question I have, there was an explanation of how you reach the pricing per month per rental? Can I hear that one more time and be a little bit more specific on what you're hoping to get per apartment?
Sure. Well, the, the numbers that I, I read in my initial presentation come directly out of state regulations. So, so 830G is a state statute, there is a set of regulations that actually contains a formula, and I'm not, it's, I'm not going to walk you through, it's a nine-step formula, but basically, it starts with the lesser of the statewide median income, or the average median income in the Stratford area, and then it makes an assumption, it makes an adjustment based on, on household size, and then it ma, most importantly, it makes the assumption that the household can spend no more than 30% of its income on, on rent. And then, you know, divide by 12, and that basically gives you the maximum monthly rent. The landlord developer is not permitted, if, if there, if there's a zoning approval under 830G, to charge more than what the state regulations allow, and there is a corollary to the, the rent, which is the maximum household income. So when an applicant for one of these eight affordable units comes to Mr. Barona, or someone who's administering the, the affordability rules, they have to document their income, you know, which is a fairly common thing, you, a lot of people do in a lot of different contexts, when you apply for a car loan, or a mortgage, or whatever. So you document your income and show that you're below the limit, you'd otherwise demonstrate your ability to pay the rent that is charged, and then you qualify, and if there is an oversubscription, I'm not sure we figured out whether it would be by lottery or first-come-first-served based on a qualification basis. There are arguments for, you know, for either way, but it would be, probably be one of those two systems. But your, your basic question, Mr. Chairman, the numbers come directly from the formula that is in state regulations, so it's not something we made up, we're following the state rules that go with 830G.
Okay, and this is just for the eight apartments?
Correct, correct. The market rent units can float at any level.
And I think what caught me, caught my ear the most was, what were the numbers that you were, I mean, I heard like an $800 rent?
Well, the, the lowest maximum, which would be for either the efficiencies of the one-bedroom, which the 830G treats those the same, if you, if you earn 42, if you qualify because you earn $42,000 or less, then the maximum rent for that unit would be $885 per month, and that's without utilities. Again, that's straight math from the state formula. Now, I, I should show, I should say, in the application, if you have your July 12th application package, the actual formula, all nine steps, is at tab number 11, on, starting on page five. So I've given you the, the calculate, the actual calculations for all four of the unit
Okay, so there's a possibility of all eight of these apartments having $885 tenants in there?
No, no, because the market rents are going to be, the, the, the affordable rents are artificially held below the market, because that's the, that's the point of the state regulations. I would expect, you know, the market rents can float, but I would expect that all of the market rents would be above the 80% level, so for the one-bedroom, it would be above 1,087 per month, and for the two-bedroom, it would be above 1,376 per month. I mean, that's just the nature of market rate units.
And those are for the market value?
Market rate, maximum month, maximum rent, not, not maximum, rent per month for the market rate units would be above the 80% level. That's the expectation.
Okay. Next question I have is, is it common practice for, in the parking lot, especially with the winters that we have around here, for ponding to allow for the water to subside? That was mentioned somewhere. There's got to be a better way, because if you're going to let it pond, and it's going to be in the winter, you're going to have a skating rink there.
Sure. For the record, Jim Swift, professional engineer. It, it's not intentional, and it's, it's not of a depth that's going to be serious. There's that effect that exists in the parking lot right now, so what we're doing is making it a little bit less, to, to be honest. It, we don't expect it to happen often, and we do have overflow areas, like I say, that it will get out into, into Riverview Place, so we, we don't expect any sort of adept or in a location that's going to be where people are exiting cars.
Well, then, maybe you're the question, you're the man I can ask this question of. What are you going to do about snow removal? Where is the snow going to go?
Well, right now, there's, there's really no place for the snow to go, because they've, they've just really paved everywhere. But what we're looking at is, we've got two areas, we've got a small area here that's exposed, and that snow can go to this island from both of these directions, and the snow in the back is going to go to this back area here, and then you can see there's, there's an island around that, that tree, so those are the snowplow areas.
So we get a foot of snow, you're going to put all that excess snow?
Well, they may have to remove it, which is not uncommon either.
Okay, just asking a question, that's your answer. Okay. I guess for the, the next question I have is in regards to, somebody made a comment in regards to trips in and out of the facility. I'm not quite sure which gentleman that was. The traffic guy.
Yes.
You had made a comment that six trips in the morning?
Seven trips in the morning.
Seven trips in the morning.
Nine trips in the afternoon.
Okay, so you have 35 people who live there. Hopefully, they all work.
No, actually, what happens is, this is based on a national standard, Institute of Transportation Engineers. What happens in instances like this is, the first thing is, not all people leave in the same peak hour. We are talking about peak hour, right? So if not everyone leave in the peak hour, so you do have an instance where you have fewer trips than a number of units. The second is, actually, this question comes up a lot at public hearings like this, not only for this kind of units, also for, you know, senior, other kind of residential units. I often, I'm often asked by the commission to verify the data, you know, they don't believe the IT data, again and again, not only by myself, by other consultants. What actual field survey you do in the Connecticut is not that different from the data you get from IT. So that's my answer to, you know, why is the discrepancy between the number of trips versus the number of units?
I understand what you're saying, I don't agree with it, but I understand. Maybe Mr. Tobin, your turn. Has there been any thoughts to the front of the building of having a nautical look, or a possible flow into the condominium that are next door type of look, like a Nantucket theme?
It was considered, but immediately rejected because of, I could make it look like a colonial building, but then I've got to, I've got to put a pitched roof over the whole structure. It's going to look like a fake. If you, if you look at the structures that are applied to commercial buildings, the facades of those buildings from, that you see from Home Depot, and ShopRite, and all those other stores that you see, are basically one-story buildings that are 18-foot tall, and then they have 20-foot of stuff that hides, that's up there, so it makes it look like it's a two-story, three-story building. I already have a two-story building that has a presence that doesn't want to be bigger, it wants to look smaller. So if I can cap the top of it off with attractive copings, and moldings, and things like that, that will soften the hardness of the architectural design of this structure. And as I said, if you look at this building, and you look at VNA, they're going to look extremely similar in nature, except this building has, instead of having a recessed walkway around it like VNA does, this has a canopy that extends out from the structure. So I'm working within the limits of the existing building. I thought about putting, you know, a false gable front on it, or something like that, but because you're going to be seeing it from such a distance, coming down 95, and/or coming up 95, you get to see past the gable, and it doesn't add to the attractiveness of the building. And from the ground, all it does is make the building look bigger.
One more question, then I'll hand over to Mr. Silhavy. Has there been any consideration of where visitor parking is going to be? It appears to me that all the spots there are accounted for. Where are the visitors going to park? Maybe they don't get visitors.
There is no separate visitor parking. Everyone, you know, in other words, there will be no designated parking to each unit.
So there's no visitors allowed?
Visitors included. Visitors included. Visitor is included in the IT calculation. Visitors included in, the data we collected, we submitted. You may disagree with it, but that's data. That's national data, that's IT data, that's data DOT use.
Mr. Silhavy, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions on the building structure itself. First of all, I didn't hear it mentioned, maybe it was in the material. When was the building actually constructed?
I didn't do any exact history on the design of the building, but there are actually three buildings there. There was initial building done in the front, there was a building added to it, to the east, towards the apartments, and then the additional structure was added to the back, because the front building is a masonry construction that was originally built. Then there was a masonry addition added to it, and then the rear structure of steel and masonry was added as a third. So it's a combination of, over the entire life of the building, there's three separate buildings there.
That are now a solitary, they're all connected?
They're all connected. They're all interconnected with corridors, and fire doors, and what have you.
Okay. So now, the, as in the proposed renovation, the parking deck will essentially no longer exist. It will be filled in, if you will, the interior parking deck.
Correct. Well, the second floor parking deck will actually now be apartment units.
Be part of the apartments.
There's no ramp to get up to that deck, so it can't be utilized as parking. And from what I could tell, there doesn't appear that there was ever a ramp actually constructed. It was a concept.
Excuse me, you'll have your turn to speak, please. Let him finish. Thank you.
Again, I was not aware of there being a ramp there. I didn't see any signs of there being a ramp there. But it looked like there was possibly, potentially one at one point.
There probably would have to be, at some point, there must have been.
There must have been, yes.
Okay. The border between the property and the condo development, as I read in the regulation, the setback there is two feet, is that correct?
With the regulations, that was not considered as part of our application, because it's an existing structure on an existing site, and the 830G regulations, we assume that the existing regulations, we mimic them, because we're not changing the size of the footprint of the building, we're just working within what we have.
But it is, the barrier between is two feet, and if I'm reading that chart, it's a little harder to look at mine, because it's so big, but that borders up against the garages from the condo development, is that correct?
The building, the building proper has more, has less of a setback than the garage structure does. The garage sector is set back probably five feet or more, and the existing building, and the buildings in the front are close up to two feet. On an 830G application, we could have actually, had we wanted to increase the size of the building, we could have brought it up to and put it on the property line as a commercial structure. It just didn't make sense, you know, we weren't interested in doing that, we were working, interested in working within the concept of the existing building.
Now, within the, I heard some discussion of it, but I want to just be clear about this. Common areas within the development, it seemed like that was, explain exactly what is common, what is not, in this?
There are no common areas.
Okay.
Staff had asked a possibility of taking these patios that are across the front here, and making that a common area, which I negated as a solution, because I have entry doors, exit doors, and apartment, you know, bedroom windows, and living room windows that all come onto this patio area, and you wouldn't want somebody, you wouldn't want that as a public space.
Right. Now, there's absolutely, it appears on the diagrams that there's a fence between that and the existing condo development. What is the condo development called, Rich? What's it called? I don't want to keep. Ferry Court. Is there a fence between this property and Ferry Court?
There is currently, yes.
And it goes the length of the property?
It goes the entire length of the property.
Because I would just make sure that there would not be any access between the two properties, they should be completely separate.
They are, they are currently.
Okay. And is it in the fence in good repair, or would have to be replaced?
I think it needs some repair.
Okay.
I think it needs some repair. I mean, parts of it, I think, are chain-linked, but there's a mix mash of fence, I believe, there.
Okay, we covered opens, yeah, the, one of the reasons, I just want to be clear, the reason I asked about the open spaces, that in many of these applications, we've looked for, especially if you have smaller families, there are areas of recreation, and this would be completely devoid of any, close to an extremely busy street, so that does raise a concern right there.
That's correct. But this is, for the most part, I kind of view this as an urban site in its nature, because of its proximity to 95, its proximity to, you know, the on-ramps and office ramps. It's really, if you think about the development that we're looking at TOD in downtown, if we took an area and put an apartment building in downtown, it would have limited common space on the ground floor also, because it's, again, that would be more urban in its design. This is not a suburban community that this building is a part of, it's more of an urban structure than it is a community, and it is a suburban community.
Next question, the, I'm assuming the building will have air conditioning and electrical, is that something that's going to be on the roof, or is that on the property itself?
The air conditioning units are individual heat pump units, similar to the split, mini-split units you see. The briefcase-sized cooling units and heating units will be on the roof, and because of the minimum number of apartments, there will be 24 of those, they will not be clustered together, they will be, they'll be clustered together in groups of two or three, and because of their low height, and they only come 30 inches off the floor, or above the ceiling, or above the roof, I wasn't planning on putting any screening around them, because you'll never see them from the ground, and potentially see them from 95. But they're not going to be big HVAC units like you do see on VNA. Unfortunately, our budget at VNA wouldn't allow us to screen them off, though I would, at one point, had a design that showed that screened in HVAC units. So it's a different heating system and concept than what we use there.
Next question I have is, might be for Mr. Rosati, and I'll ask Mr. Habanski to just be available, because you had mentioned that we, this property, and I've trying desperately to remember, in 2006, you said that this was brought before for residential use, and you said that it was rejected at that point, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you have any, it wasn't provided, I'm not surprised, actually, but was there any documentation of the reasons why it was rejected by the zoning commission? Or was there a letter? Mr. Habanski, do we know anything from the file from that time?
It was a special case application for residential development in the CA district. It didn't meet the special case requirements, and it got denied. Attorney Cubic brought it.
I do recall him being the attorney at that point.
I remember reviewing the file prior to doing my staff comments on this current application. I don't remember offhand, but I could certainly provide that information.
That'd be helpful, just to see if there was anything that was identified at that point with the property. Go ahead, sir.
Just getting back to the question you had, this building was originally built in 1962, that existing footprint since then. Village Square, the condominium, was developed long after that, in the 80s. My father, Mr. Posey, my father represented Mr. Posey, who built that. So that alleyway, we were there first.
My last question is actually for Mr. Hollister. Regarding the applica, the proposed amendment. I've rarely seen anyone like this where, and I'm not saying that I don't necessarily like the way it was structured, but this is a unique way of putting it in section 29.4, listing the land on Ferry Boulevard and Riverview Place. You said that it's become somewhat common in some of your applications that you've submitted, to have it structured in this way, where it very specifically states where it's applicable, is that correct?
All of them, no.
Have they ever been challenged in court?
No.
Not even as a spot zoning issue?
No, because about 20 years ago, the courts made it very clear that spot zoning is not a consideration under 830G, so putting that issue to bed.
That's interesting. You specifically exempted this from our special case regulation.
Correct.
I'll tell you what I'm just concerned with, and I'll allow you to, I'll ask if you can just speak to it. I suspect, and I know that you've been involved in 8-30G applications for a number of years, I am concerned that this is going to become a model for other areas, and will exempt themselves from special case regulations. Maybe the other towns don't have them similar to what we do. But I find that very concerning, that all of the criteria that is evaluated in those is now pulled off, and it's pretty much in an attempt to make sure that it gets the three-vote, three-vote majority, as opposed to the four-vote.
Well, I can't speak to the three votes versus four votes, but the, one of the purposes of 830G, and one of the reasons we do a regulation generally that's site-specific, is, we spell out, for the commission to see, at the regulation and at the application stage, exactly what's going to be built. So there actually is a process where the commission, hopefully, working with the applicant, spells out, make sure that, not a discretionary process at the end of the application, but it is a prescriptive process at the beginning of the application. So there should be, if we do this right, there should be no surprise as to what is approved, and what is going to be built on the site. So I guess I'm not, I would not agree with your premise, that if you take this out of a special permit or special case process, that you're losing some control. You're actually gaining control by doing a site-specific regulation. And as I said earlier, what you're also gaining is, you don't have to think about other properties where this might become a model. If people choose to do that, if you continue to keep your bedroom cap in place, and 830G is the only way, the only avenue for someone who wants to develop more than eight units, then you may well get an application that's styled on this one. But, you know, that's the, that's the policy choice that the state has made, and you've made, the applicant has made, that's the way the process works. If I could just go back, Mr. Chairman, to two earlier comments, the building was built in 1962, and my client reminded me that his goal for the market rate units is $1,800 per month, his goal. Just give you an order of magnitude. Sorry, I didn't mean to pull off your.
No problem, that was last of my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Henrick?
So with the, you've got, I think, 37 parking spaces on the property now? You're proposing 37 spaces?
Yes, 37 spaces.
How did you come up with that number? Not how many spaces, but how did you come up with?
We wanted to make sure we were exceeding 1.5 per unit. And remember, 22 of the 24 units here are either efficiencies or one-bedroom. So 1.5 spaces for essentially what is almost 100% one-bedroom unit development exceeds almost any standard in the state of Connecticut.
What is Stratford's regulation?
I don't, well.
I mean, did you use Stratford's regulation to determine?
Well, we looked at Stratford's regulations, I can't quote your numbers across the board in different zones. I can tell you that the IT data that Mr. Wa referred to was the baseline, and we're well over that, and that's based on this type of housing, low-rise apartments, relatively small units. So we're way over that. And the IT data includes visitor parking spaces. It would make no sense to have apartments that paid no attention to visitor parking spaces. We understand that. So even if we were at the IT standard, that would account for visitor spaces, but we have nine more spaces than that.
Do we have a, we have a regulation?
We do. So it's two spaces for each dwelling unit containing two bedrooms or more, 1.5 spaces for each unit containing an efficiency or one-bedroom unit, plus guest parking at 10% of the total spaces required. And then it goes on to talk about other caveats that the.
Do you have, if we follow that regulation, do you have that number? Have you done the math on it?
Well, I think they're proposing 1.5, is that correct?
Correct, 1.53.
So 1.5 for efficiencies, and, but I think that the applicant is using 1.5 across the board, is that correct? For each unit, regardless of.
We only have two two-bedroom units.
So is that above or below our regulation?
For one-bedroom, it exceeds your regulations. Meets your regulations.
It meets our regulations.
Meets the regulation at 1.5.
Then you have two two-bedrooms.
And the number of two-bedrooms, again, there are two two-bedrooms, so that would add an additional.
Two spaces.
Two spaces.
So that would be 1.5 times 24, which would be 36, plus two more?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, plus 10%.
Plus 10%.
So about 42. So you're slightly under our, and you have 37.
I didn't follow that math, I think we double-counted the two-bedroom units, but I think as, because.
We have two two-bedrooms, so that's four spaces.
Well, under your regulations, but we think 1.5 across the board is under the ITE, which covers both one and two-bedroom units.
So because you're coming in under 830G, you would need to follow our parking regulations?
Well, I mean, yes, there is that, but we also want to, you know, no one has a greater interest in making sure that there is adequate parking at the site than Mr. Barone. If it's underparked, then no one's going to want to live there. So he's got a very important interest in making sure.
We also have regulations, it's just what I'm, I was hoping actually when I asked the question that you were going to tell me you exceeded our regulations and.
Well, I think we meet your regulations for 22 of the 24 units.
You're under our regulations, because we don't look at it as a per-unit, we look at it as a total space. For the total development, the 1.5 spaces per one-bedroom or efficiency is part of a mathematical equation that gets us to a final number. So to say we kind of meet some of them, but we don't meet all of them, in the end, you fall short. My point is, and I was hoping you guys were going to go the other route and exceed our regulations, but you are under our regulations for the parking. And I don't know if that would require a variance, because in the past, we weren't allowed to give, we weren't allowed to reduce our parking without a variance. I think in cases we had done that before, it got kicked back to us, and we were told that we weren't allowed to do that. As a zoning commission, in order for that to happen, it would need to go to the BZA first, get their approval for a variance on the parking regulations, and then you would come to us. But that was my, again, I was hoping you guys exceeded our numbers, and it kind of went.
I would just point out that your regulations, Stratford's regulations, far exceed the ITE requirement.
But you're coming to Stratford, and those are our regulations, and if you want to build in our town, it'd probably be a good idea to follow our regulations, or show to some extent that you're going to comply with them. So, you know, I understand federal regulations, I understand all of that, but what I'm saying is, in our town, where you're making this application, and I don't want to turn this into an argument, but you're kind of pushing it there, you're not meeting our regulations with parking. And there's some concern about the parking, the question that two of the other commissioners have had, and I'm sure a number of the people in the audience are going to ask, is where are people going to park? And so our regulations would require you to have about 42, 43 spaces, and you're at 37. So just, that question's been answered. As far as the zone, you're looking for a spot zone, or whatever you might call it, there's a condominium complex next door, does it make sense to just extend the, and I don't know if it would fall into it, but does it make sense just to extend the condo, the zone at the condo association onto this lot as opposed to doing a spot change?
Well, as I understand it, Mr. Attorney Rosati can correct me, we can't do that under your bedroom cap.
Okay. But you're, but because you're doing the 830G, you're still, you're still, you're avoiding the bedroom cap.
Correct.
So that wouldn't really pertain to, if we extend, instead of spot zoning, if we extended that, if we extended that zone that the condominium association is under, would that allow you to put the bedroom units there, and the cap would not pertain because you're doing it as an 830G?
Well, I haven't looked at the regulation that governs the condominium, but I can tell you as a matter of practice that if we took that regulation and tried to extend it to our property, we would either end up amending most sections of the regulation that governs the condo, or we would make the condominium itself a non-conforming use, which I'm sure the people who live there don't want, and you don't want to do, that's a Hobson's choice. We don't want to do either of those things, which is precisely why we draft a site-specific regulation, so we don't need to bother the, or upset the existing regulation of the condominium.
But why would the condominium become non-conforming?
Because if we amended the regulation that governs them and changed the standards, there would certainly inevitably be some standards with which the condominium would not comply with its own zone.
So as far as kids per unit, what do you, so most of these are one-bedrooms or efficiencies, I would assume.
Fifteen efficiencies, seven one-bedrooms.
We have 20, basically 22 one-bedrooms. Typically in those type of units, I mean, you know, typically you won't, I would assume you don't get kids moving into one-bedroom.
That's correct.
So the thought of having common space, play space for kids, really in a development like this wouldn't be necessary because the.
That's our thinking.
The reality for kids, and so you have two opportunities for kids in the one-bedroom, which, you know, okay. So, and then as far as the snow removal and the parking, I think I'm reading this right, but most of those parking spaces are under roof already.
Correct.
So that you were not going to get snow on, throughout the whole parking lot, so the need for snow removal is not going to be as.
That's correct.
As extreme as if that was an entirely open space.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I think that's all I had, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
Yeah.
Ms. Phillips?
The, when I just did the calculations real quick, Mr. Hollister, I'll direct the questions from you, just point of information. If I did my calculations correctly, you, to meet the 37 spots, which would include the 10%, we would have to reduce the number of single-bedroom units or efficiencies down to somewhere around 19 plus two. So that would be a total of 22. Is that any way that your applicant would consider that?
I'm sorry, are you asking to reduce the total number of units in the development from 24 to 19?
To 22.
To 22.
I think that would make it, if you keep the two, if you continue to stay with the two two-bedrooms. I, we can recheck the math, but that's what I'm looking at roughly. So my question is more general, would your, to meet within the 37 spaces that you have allotted, assuming you can't develop any more parking spaces, would your applicant consider reducing the number of units to meet the 37 spaces which would include the 10%?
I will have that discussion with him before.
Okay. The second thing is, would your applicant consider, because one of my concerns is, and I have a similar concern about traffic and density, but we also have a tremendous need for age-restricted housing. I'm not looking to bring a lot of kids into the town, into the school system, but we do have a lot of seniors, and most seniors don't have two cars. Would your applicant consider taking some of those units and making them age-restricted?
Okay, well, remember, under the Federal Fair Housing Act, we, it's either 80% age-restricted or none. The 80% is the minimum. We can't, we can't do 40% or 50%, it has to be 80% of the unit if it's going to be age-restricted. So I will, I will ask Mr. Barone that, but that's.
Let me see, I'm slow on that one, say that again?
The Federal Fair Housing Act require, if you're going to have age-restricted housing, a minimum of 80% of the total units in the development need to be age-restricted. You can't do some, you have to do almost all.
Is that to make the whole building age-restricted?
80%.
Not, again, I'm going to be a little dense here, I apologize.
That's all right.
We can't say, we can say 10% could be affordable housing under the terminology, but we can't say additional 10% is deemed age-restricted.
You cannot do that. You'd be violating federal, the Federal Fair Housing Act.
Okay. All right, moving on.
Okay, I will take your question back to my client.
Okay.
I will say, of course, you know, seniors can apply to live here just like everybody else. The issue is whether we would restrict them to, or 80% of the units to that level. I will ask Mr. Barone and bring you an answer next time.
Well, understand that my questions were directed at, you know, looking at density, trying to reduce density, but find a solution that also doesn't increase traffic and meets a need that the neighborhood actually needs. I don't know if your applicant would consider the whole building age-restricted, certainly that would be a more positive direction for me, but I'd be interested to hear what he would say. In your presentation, there was a discussion about what a runoff was going to be reduced, and I know we got into a little discussion about the ponding that was going to be in the parking lot, but I really didn't get a clear understanding of how much water reduction were we going to achieve, or how much was going to spill into, off the property.
Yes, the, well, as I stated, the existing condition has no controls whatsoever. All the roofs discharge onto the ground, that flow comes down and dries off the corner of the site in that location. Mr. Casey's program, and the program that the town follows for all these things now, requires that certain amount of that water be put back into the ground. And if you look in the book, you'll find a section on stormwater calculations, I won't bore you with the essence of it.
Yeah, thank you.
But we are taking that one-half inch and we're putting it back into the.
So make it in very simple terms for me. Are you going to keep 95% on property and 5% goes into off-property, or what?
No, that would, I would reverse those numbers.
Okay, tell me.
Yep. The, the exact discharge of peak flow, which I'm sure you know, cubic feet per second, that calculation was been done and doesn't change. Okay? So that's the start, those are the peak flows. The half-inch that goes back into the ground is an amount of rainfall that's less than is measured in those typical measurements. You know, we generally measure the two-year storm all the way up to the 100-year storm, and we did provide those numbers. The half-inch flow is, I think, the one-year storm event is probably, I think, 1.8 inches. So the half-inch would be maybe your average summer light rainfall.
Okay.
That would be the amount of water that gets put back into the ground.
And that's good.
It's.
How much does not get back? So that means that, is there more that does not get put back in the ground and goes into our sewer system?
No, it's less, and it's less in two cases. In the first case, it's less because we're reducing the impervious coverage of the site. So in that respect, we're discharging less water. Secondly, is we're taking that half-inch of water that remains, and we're putting that back into the ground. So we didn't really calculate it in the sense of a percentage, it's more calculated in cubic footage.
I know, I read it, it was hard to follow.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, that's, you know, what we did. And in point of fact, I mean, when we look at some of the drainage that's out in the street. I'll go back to, to this drawing. If you look in the corner there, there's a catch basin located here, and not a lot of the water reaches that catch basin from the site as it exists, because this is a lower area. And so all that water doesn't reach that catch basin, it just flows down Riverview Place. And hence what my decision was, is to regain the site a little bit to hold that water in, because what we're trying to do is maximize the amount of water that gets held in those infiltrators.
Right.
Maximize the flow that leaves the site, because that helps the neighborhood. Now, if there was a concern about the puddling of the area, as it stands now, the stormwater would, if it were to fill up those infiltrators, it would fill up about, to about a four-inch depth here, to a 0% depth there, and then start flowing down the gutter. What I could just as easily have done is put a cut right in that location and eliminate it all the puddling. I thought it was better not to do that, but I can do that.
I think my only comment would be to ask you to just double-check with the town engineer on his best recommendation.
Oh, yeah.
All right?
Sure. And I think we have, I think we have done that.
And he's satisfied?
Certainly, we should all follow through.
Just double-check.
Yep.
And also, are there going to be filters? I mean, I'm assuming garbage gets collected, is there a process of which they get cleaned out, replaced? What happens?
Yeah, the detail is that in a catch basin, the water's collected in two catch basins, here and here, and the water flows from those into the infiltrators. But what, before that can happen, there are, the pipes out of those catch basins are hooded, and the hood extends down below the pipe invert that goes out. So what happens is if the basin fills up with siltation to the bottom of that pipe, it stops working at all, and that's the clue to the owner of the property, hey, this isn't even working anymore, I've got to clean the siltation out of my basin. So it's a self-policing, if you will, system, and it's, the same works for the trash.
So is there going to be a requirement that that gets checked or inspected, and I'm assuming oil and other set, other material, my drain in there needs to be filtered and cleaned?
Yeah.
Is there a schedule that stays on file that says the building owner is required to check it annually, clean it out, or anything like that?
We can provide that. We can, we can provide that.
I think that's all the questions that I have at this time.
Thank you. Would anybody, hold on, seeing any other questions? None? Would anybody like to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody who would like to speak in favor? Okay. Anybody in opposition? Care to come step forward, state your name clearly, and give us your opinion?
I live at Village Square, my name is Barbara Dugan, I've been there for about 15 years. I think for me, the elephant in the room is that we have an EPA Superfund site right across the street, and everybody around us has got venting systems, and I was wondering if this property has been tested as far as VOCs, if it's safe to have people, because children are going to play outside whether you like it or not, and there is asbestos. They come to clean up across the street in sometimes, you know, suits to protect them. So I'm not sure that this is actually a safe place to put people. I'd like to know if it's been, you know, tested to see if the groundwater is polluted, and, you know, to see that the property's safe for inhabitation, you know. So I'd like to know if we're going to have any studies done to find out if, you know, this is a safe property. We don't have VOCs where we live, and, you know, I know they say that they're not going to do any digging, but, you know, I hear about the parking lot is bad, they're going to have to dig the parking lot up, they're going to have to dig for trees, they're going to do landscaping, you know, we have airborne asbestos. We don't even know where all the airborne asbestos is, because they keep finding new places. They just found some near the toll booth. So we're not sure where this waste is around town, and I think it needs to be a safe place for people. It also needs to be a place where we can also have quality of life living next door to it. If we're going to have people coming over on our property and parking, you know, that's going to be a problem for us. We already have enough problems with parking, so I'd really like you guys to take a look at this and see if this is actually something that we should see in this part of town. Now, I understand that they're also putting another two apartment buildings in, I think it's 262 residents, including the one that's already going up. So when we look at the traffic for that, you know, we're looking at these 24, 22 units, you know, are we looking at these under 262 people that are going to be. you know, are we looking at these under 262 people that are going to be, you know, these units that are going to have more traffic? So when I see a study, I go, where's the rest of it? You know, come on, we've got to look at the entire picture here. So, you know, I just want to thank everybody for listening and, you know, give it some thought before we go ahead and stick it in here because we're going to have people living here. You know, the studies aren't going to matter after the people are moved in there and, you know, we find contamination on the property. So, you know, let's, let's give it some thought before we go ahead and do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
Well, my name is Kerry Gleason, and we live at the end of the street.
I'm sorry, could you pronounce your name again for us?
Kerry Gleason.
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 Like in Jackie?
Yes. No relation, but like Jackie.
Just checking.
Right. So, I mean, this is difficult for me. I know Biagio for a long time. I consider him a friend. I think he, he really is a local boy who made good. And I certainly don't want to stand in the way of him developing the property to some extent. Attorney Rosati and I have had many deals together over the years professionally, and I respect him tremendously. So again, certainly not anything personal. But living in that neighborhood, living on that street, there is, there is a big problem already, and it is a very narrow street. And there is a lot of young children who play on that street. You'd be hard-pressed to find a day where you didn't turn down that street to find a bunch of children playing on that street every single day. So there already is a problem with traffic being dangerous anyway. There is no parking on that street as it is. There's, there's just no on-street parking. There's no space for it. Poli's Gymnastics and Dance doesn't help, and no matter how hard they try. I mean, it's a, it's an institution in the town. It's a tremendous benefit to the town. My niece went there. I know plenty of other people who went there. But in terms of creating parking issues, when there's things going on, no matter how hard you try, they're coming around the corner parking on our street. To put 24 units in that building, it is unrealistic completely, irregardless of what the expert says. There's probably going to be at least 36 residents alone in that building, much less exactly what the chairman said. You're saying nobody's going to have any visitors? It is not realistic. That, that 3% or whatever, 10%, whatever the number is for parking, isn't realistic. You're not going to have, when that is fully staffed or fully, people living there fully, there is no way it's only going to take up 37 parking spaces. It's, it's not even going to, 42 isn't even a realistic number of where people's friends, boyfriends, girlfriends, parents, anyone who wants to stop by. There is no place on that street for extra parking. And all you have to do is drive up and down there any day, and you'll see it for yourself how limited the parking is in that place. The lady who just spoke before me, who I have not met, raises a very valid concern about the environmental scenario and impact in that. You know, all of our houses in that neighborhood and all of the surrounding neighborhoods are already assisted by DEP and EPA. We have these sort of super radon systems underneath the houses that they put in to make them safe to live in and that are maintained by them. I agree with her that the, the questions that raise when you have to dig in there for the water runoff, for the parking lot, for whatever it is, raises a potential risk to the safety and health of everyone who lives there. And I think, again, as she says, very, very minimum, there has to be environmental studies that are done. Traffic coming out onto, to Ferry Boulevard is already risky in the sense of especially, again, if Poli's has something going on, there's cars that are outside on Ferry Boulevard or there's people standing on Ferry Boulevard to try to help the cars come out. When you're coming out onto the street, you have to turn right. Traffic is coming left. It's a very busy road, tough to see, only going to be made worse, not better, although I understand the argument, when the entrance to the highway is put in. But again, as the lady who spoke before me said, so correctly, there is a massive amount of new apartments coming in, in that area, and that's a one-way road. So all of that traffic gets funneled past the entrance to that street. There is no way around it because it's a one-way road. So, so there are serious issues with the proposal. There has to be some way to not tie Mr. Barone's hands and allow him to benefit, to develop it to some extent, but nowhere near 24 units. You know, the connotation of rent-controlled property is also going to significantly impact the values, the land values on that street. Now, myself, the Wagner's who live across the street from me, we're paying over $15,000 a year in tax to live on that street. You put rent-controlled property there, there is absolutely positively going to have a detrimental effect on the land values on that street. And a lot of people on that street within the last few years have put a lot of money into their houses to try to improve it and make it nicer. Despite what someone had said earlier, and I don't remember which one it was, this isn't an urban area. This is a suburban neighborhood. It, it, without, after the first house or two, it's a completely suburban neighborhood with yards, with kids playing, with families, block parties and things like that. This isn't the middle of, you know, inner-city Bridgeport where we can sit there and say, again, no offense to Bridgeport, but that's not the scenario that we're looking at here. It's a suburban neighborhood. So there's a lot of things that, that argue against having 24 units. It's not a realistic number there. And again, I would, I would ask any of the commission members or committee members to just take a drive down that street at any given time and look at the, the activity that's on that street and look at the parking. Finally, with the snow removal, again, as the chairman said, so we're going to put all that snow in that little area. Not realistic. We've had some pretty big storms. I've been snowed in on that street a couple times already. What's, and, and again, alls they do with the snow is they push it to the very end of the street, right by, by Gary and Kerry's house and, and, and by our house. It gets to a point where it backs up to the edge of my driveway. I'm the farthest driveway down. Backs up to the edge of my driveway. So you can't back out and, and back into the space at the end of the street because the snow has piled up that far out. You've got to turn around in your driveway. The traffic that exists now, there's probably two to three cars a day that come down to the end of the street and turn around in my driveway because they have nowhere to go. And again, as someone was testifying earlier, or maybe they didn't testify, it could have been something I read, but, but the garbage, the recycling, any, any large vehicle, FedEx, UPS, they all drive down and they either have to try to turn around in my driveway or more likely, they back down the street, back the same way that they pulled in.
Could you, by, there happens to be a map on the first of that display?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, if you could unflip it. Yeah. All the way, the very first page. Keep going, very first page. Yeah. Just, if you could show us where you live.
It doesn't show. You're all the way in.
Okay.
Ahead of the street, you're, or on the river. So I'm very end of the street on the right. Gary and Carol across the street on the left. And certainly, they will testify. So anyone who comes down the street with any kind of large vehicle, there is no room to turn around. There's no, you know, semicircular turnaround at the end of the street. It's just the same width all the way down and then stops as a barrier. So they have to turn into, the Wagner's were smart. They put up something across their driveway so people couldn't turn in and turn around. Something that we're thinking about doing ourselves. Right, they were smart. You know, so, because it's constant. It's constant where there's, there's vehicles turning around in my driveway literally two to three times a day. But, but the bigger, the bigger problem is the big vehicles, if they don't do that, have to back up all the way back down the street. Again, there's kids in the street, a lot of kids in that neighborhood. Emergency vehicles, if you have this extra parking, I mean, literally just within the last three days, we could not get down the street to get out because someone was having a painter over the house and the painter parked directly across the street from someone else who was parked on the street. So if there's two vehicles parked on each side of the street, you can't get by. The, the painter had to move his vehicle up onto the curb in order for us to be able to get by. What happens in an emergency when an emergency vehicle has to get down there and can't because there's now no room on the street because of, of all of the tenants and visitors and stuff like that? So again, I certainly do not begrudge Biagio. I think he's a great guy, and I think, I'm glad that he bought the building, and I hope that there's some compromise that would allow him to develop it. But 24 units and the traffic and parking, the issues that that is going to create is not realistic on that street. It is a very, very narrow street. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is James McCaughy. I live at 61 Riverview Place. It's adjacent to the property.
Can we have your last name again, please?
McCaughy, M-C-C-A-U-G-H-E-Y.
Thank you.
You have to spell it.
Sure.
All right. The building has, building has been laid vacant for a long time. It's a nice though, there's no question. As a taxpayer, I want something in there. I've lived in the property now for 18 years, and I do have a history itself. Five years ago, there was a proposal of this, or 2006, there was a proposal of this magnitude, and it was defeated in zoning. The board cited the reason why it was rejected was inadequate parking. That was the reason, okay? 1.5 spaces. There's no space for it. There's no way to get, even if you wanted to put all the, the snow removal in there, there's no way to get plows in there if all the cars are there. It's going to be an impossibility. Where's the snow going to go? You know? If people are visiting, they're coming on our street. There's only one side of the street that's possible to park on. There's no other side of the street. There are signs that says you cannot park there, okay? Because there is no way to bring the cars, any emergency vehicles down the road. The property came into front of zoning a few years ago, and the number of units was greatly reduced. I believe it was nine or eight was the number, and which addressed the board's concern. But now, once again, the number has increased dramatically, and the same result should be, it should be voted down again. There's no way to sustain that number on this block. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't fight, ladies.
Bonnie Lambert, 46 Ferry Court, Village Square Condominiums. A couple of things to clarify. There are three apartment projects going in on Ferry Boulevard in the TOD. And I think we've pretty much reached a saturation point as far as that apartments are concerned. Also, seeing as there's no green space and no common areas with this project, where are these people going to go? That's a big concern. Are, are they going to have pets? Where are they going to walk them? There's no space for that. They're going to be walking over in our condo in Village Square. Where are the visitors going to park? We're right next door. They're going to be swinging into our parking lot. That's not, that's not fair to us either, seeing as we have limited parking to begin with. There's just, it's just not the right fit for this area. Too many units, too many units already on Ferry Boulevard. Not, there's, and there's no space for the residents to have any recreation at all. So where are they going to walk? Going to walk through Village Square Condominiums? These are, these are some concerns that, that I have, and I know some of the other residents do too. Also, what I would like to do, there are a lot of residents here, we've already, about 10 of our residents have already left because it's getting late. But if there are any residents here that would like to just be recognized as being in opposition, I'd like them to at least have a show of hands.
About 18. We'll call it 25.
Okay. Thank you.
Gail counted quickly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah.
Hello, I'm Kathy McCaughy. I live with him at 61 Riverview Place.
With him?
That guy. I have something to talk about other than just the parking, but because it has come up throughout the night, I did want to show you some pictures. I don't know if you want to pass this out and round and swipe, but what it looks like underneath where they're talking about putting a lot of that parking. There are holes all throughout the bottom.
Two things. I need you to stay at the mic, otherwise you won't be recorded properly.
There are holes all throughout.
And we cannot take your phone, otherwise we'll have to keep it as evidence.
Oh, okay. But I would just like, if you would like to go and see-
If you can print those out, send them to us. Or if you want to email them to me.
I will do that, yes. Because it makes parking impossible underneath there. I've lived there for 18 years. I have parked underneath there. You know, when there was the church there, they allowed us to park there all the time. I have crashed many cars into those poles. Just saying. They're very narrow. And that's not talking about, you know, the SUVs and the minivans that are today. I'm talking about 18 years ago in my Honda Civic, my Chevy Lumina. Just put that out there. Also, something that wasn't brought up about the parking is that there needs to be designated handicap parking spaces as well on top of the 1.5 to two spots per unit. That's something that was not brought up. But I would like to speak of those children that was brought, that were brought up earlier because when we first arrived tonight, you had mentioned that we should preserve the neighborhood and its character on the first item on the agenda tonight. And that's what I would like to do for my neighborhood. We live on a very small street. It's isolated from any other parts. We can't get to the condos. We can't get to Husatonic Avenue. We have 16 homes on this street. We are all very close. We all know each other. We all rely on one another. We have 18 children, 14 and under. We also have high school students, but they do play basketball in the street sometimes. But it's the 18 children otherwise running back and forth between the houses. They have grown up together. They love one another. They are welcome in our homes at all times. And yes, we teach them to stop for the cars and to look both ways, but they don't always listen. So when we're talking about the idea that, you know, safety issues and concerns are one of the reasons that a project like this would be not approved, the safety concerns on that street are huge. If you do park, you're only allowed to park on the one side of the street without blocking driveways, you might get six or seven cars up that whole side, the whole street. No more than that. If there's a child coming through, that's a safety concern. If, you know, with the snow removal, the bikes and everything, that becomes an issue. We already have cars parked on the street. When Poli's is in session, Poli's is a great program. My children have gone there. You know, they are obviously a place that we all love and enjoy. But if they have overflow and they come onto our street, it becomes an issue. As was stated already, you can't turn off that street when Poli's is in session. You need to, to say, I cannot leave at 5:10 because Poli's is getting out at that time. That's just the way it is. That's where we live. But back to the safety concerns with the children, their bus stop, 18 children go to school every day on the corner of Riverview and Ferry, Ferry Boulevard, outside of where this apartment building is. 18 children, that's where their bus stop is located by the town of Stratford. So that's another safety concern, where people turn in quickly, not having enough space on the sidewalk for them to be, having all these cars and all these people, having, you know, going past them because even though we all heard that peak time, I don't know if that's nine o'clock people go to work in other areas of the country, on our street, a lot of us are teachers, a lot of us are bus drivers, or own their own businesses. They leave at 7:00, 8:00, just as when the children are leaving. And in this kind of community where we are a lot of people working in blue-collar jobs, that's the time you leave at. So with the children sitting on the corner of the bus stops or getting off of the bus, that's when the traffic is coming through. So I would like for you to consider this as a real safety issue because for us and our young children who live there, it truly is. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Linda Cal. I live at Village Square Condominiums. I've been living there for about 29 years. I don't know where our traffic engineer is getting his analysis from, but I'm basically home most of the time. And if you live there, which everybody probably raises a hand, and when there's a problem on I-95, which seems to be lately all the time, you can't even get out of your driveway. It's gridlocked. For some reason, there's more and more traffic, more New York cars coming into Stratford. Trying to even get through Devon is gridlocked. It, it, it's a nightmare there. When I get off of Ferry Boulevard to come into the driveway, you've got to cross over. So now you're adding a lot more cars that have to come cross over, and it's very difficult to look to try to get over there. It, it, it's almost like a blind spot or something. Our property values are going to go further down than what they are. We have a unique condominium. We have waterfront property, and it's going to be harder to sell the units. I mean, there's going to be people moving out of Village Square because of it, if it goes through. You know, taxes are very high. I think safety's an issue. I think security's an issue. The parking's a big issue. Right now, we got a lot of people coming off the street. If they break down, they, they use our parking lot to call the tow or whatever. So that's going to be a big problem if they don't have the adequate parking over there. And, and then, you know, they're going to have parties. They're going to have parties. So it's, you know, it's, it's not going to be just, you know, Johnny Joe showing up. They're going, you know, if you have two or three families having parties, where are all those cars going to go? top of that property with these fences broken, you know, they're gonna have, if you build this, they're gonna have young people living there. They're gonna wanna blast music. That's all gonna be coming into our complex, affecting the people living on that side. I think that's something to take into consideration. And I agree with Barbara Dugan and the other gentleman about, you know, is there any revestis contaminated soil in the area? And we don't know. You know, health issues, we need, you know, we do need professionals from the EPA to advise us. We need soil and water samples done. Again, the noise and traffic level. And now, as far as, you know, the construction that they are gonna be doing there, where are they gonna put their vehicles? When they started doing I-95, I went to that meeting. "Where are you gonna put your vehicles?" They said, "We're gonna put it on the other side where the weight station used to be." Well, they had them all on our side. I mean, you know, we've had so much construction going on, you know, you can't sleep over there. We're human beings. And now they wanna do more. So where are they gonna put these vehicles? They don't have enough spaces over there. And snow, as, you know, snow, we've had, you know, we've had a move snow, we've had bad snow, we've had piles up like this, we've had to have them come get it out of there. So that could be a big issue. Now, they keep talking about this water drainage or whatever. I call it a cesspool, just like the other one we have over there at 95. You're gonna get mosquitoes. I got bit last night. You don't even see them, and they just show up. You know, that's gonna be a big problem over there. In wintertime, it's gonna turn into an ice skating pond. Again, more traffic's gonna be coming through with the children playing. To me, we have that big apartment building going up next to Ferry Boulevard. You know, it's a high-rise. It's almost like Ferry Boulevard is becoming co-op city. And I've lived here my whole life, and it's historic. Why don't we keep it that way? We have a lot of waterfront here. There's a lot of other places in Stratford that they could put affordable housing. I just, like the rest of them, don't think that this is the place for what he wants to And we need our property taxes to go down. You know, we need more commercial businesses here to get our property taxes down, not more residential apartments. So anyways, I hope, you know, you take security and safety and everything else I talk about into consideration when you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you.[760.54][760.54][applause] Anyone else would like to speak in opposition? Don't be shy.
My name is Frank Daniele. D-A-N-I-E-L-E. I live at 81 Ferry Court in Stratford, right next door. I have pretty much a lot of the same concerns that everyone else has as well with parking. And what I can say is, I purchased my unit in 2000, and I moved back recently because I like it so much here. It's, Stratford is a really wonderful community, and it is suburban. It's not as urban as it's, as we've heard, as we've heard people talking today about. One of the aspects that I do have that kind of concerns me is the building itself, the structure itself. While I do applaud the owner for wanting to do something with that building, because having been there since 2000, it really hasn't, it's pretty much been an eyesore up until I would, I don't entirely oppose having apartments there. I think he's going a little too crazy with the number of units. And while the architect mentioned before that he has a better eye for looking at the building probably more than everybody else, I think I'm one of the 95% of the world that looks at that building and says, "It really doesn't belong in this type of a community." I don't think you need to tear it down and rebuild it, but I think we could soften it in some way and not have it look like a doctor's office. That's, that's all I can say. I mean, I don't, it sounds pretty negative, but I'm not entirely opposed, and I actually would like to see something go in that building rather than just being an empty space. I would like it to be a little more warm and inviting, though. That's my concern, on top of all the rest of the concerns that are here as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.[906.20][906.20][applause] Anybody else would like to speak in opposition?
My name is Dan Della Gioia, and my family has owned and operated Poli's Gymnastics for the past 41 years. And I gotta apologize to my neighbors here. I know we have a traffic problem. You know, we tell, we staggered the classes, we give out notices, we tell them the police are gonna ticket the cars, and they don't listen. So, my apologies. But I would love to see something go in that building. It's been an eyesore for many, many years. I don't think this is the proper use. I just think that street is too narrow. I've been there for 40 years. I lived there in the White House, right on the corner. I've seen the ambulances, the fire trucks, the garbage trucks, everybody go down that street. It is very, very narrow, and it's difficult. They back out of the street. When they pull down there, plowing is horrible. So as much as I would like to see something done with it, I don't think that's the proper use.
Thank you.[983.00][983.00][applause]
My name is Pam Williams, and I'm 64 Ferry Court, and I've lived there for over 15 years. And I do disagree with the affordable housing of 40, 24 units, with so many cars, probably like maybe over, I would say 40 cars or more, for people living in a two-bedroom and maybe 15 one-bedroom units. The traffic, like everybody else had said, is a big issue, but I'm also concerned with the disturbance of the soil in that area, with the runoff of water and things like that. And we have, what one other person had mentioned, we had a couple of years ago with 95, there were constant at night, you couldn't sleep at night because of all the drilling and everything else and the bright lights. So that is also a health, a health issue. We have 95 with lots of traffic back and forth, morning, noon, and night, and we have to, you know, deal with that. But to put up with another big building next door with 24 units and a one-way, this is a small dead-end street, I think, I don't know, I don't think this is the highest investments for that property, and I disagree.[1074.13][1074.13][applause]
Thank you.[1076.13][1076.13][applause] Anybody else would like to speak in opposition?
This isn't my favorite thing, believe me. And I may not, I'm not very good at it, but we'll give it a shot. Carol Walker, 135 Riverview Place, last, one of the last houses on the street. We have since put a chain across our driveway because there's no place to turn around, and every truck and every car that came down the street chose our driveway, which is the widest and the flattest. Therefore, we now have a chain across, so every time we come or go, we have to get out and take the chain, put it back up. Very inconvenient, but necessary. Do I have the opportunity to ask some questions to, or to you?
You can present the questions, but no one, we will not have to answer. Or we can get the answers to you at a later date.
One of the things that I didn't hear addressed was the deliveries that would be made at that apartment building, such as furniture, UPS, FedEx, and any other truck, because there's no place for a truck to pull in there. So I don't know what arrangements would be made. They certainly couldn't deliver on Ferry Boulevard because you can't stop there. So I was just wondering what, how they thought they would get any deliveries there. I also was curious, we all have radon removal systems on our homes, and I was wondering if that particular building has the units as well, if they need them, if they don't have them, are they gonna have them? And we just had to have additional unit put on our home by the Stratford Health Department requirement, and of course, no expense to us, to the taxpayers it is. But I was wondering if they have to have the same units there. All the statistics that are being quoted as far as particularly traffic control, traffic statistics, I'm wondering if they're taking into consideration anything having to do with all these new apartments that are going on Ferry Boulevard? Because it seems to me that we have an excess of 200 new apartments coming on within about a half a mile radius of Riverview Place. I'm wondering if that has been taken into consideration. Now, all that being said, that, those are my questions. These are my comments. We're not opposed to the development of the property. We would love to see something there. It's an eyesore. It has been an eyesore for many, many years. But these are the issues that we face. We'd like to have something that is aesthetically pleasing, as well as something that fits into our neighborhood. We've had, the property has been approved for nine apartments, which never happened. That seemed to be a lot more reasonable and something that we actually would have liked to see there. The main concern on Riverview Place is it's a very narrow, dead-end street. It's widest at the top, and narrows as you get down to the end of the street. So every garbage truck, this is, I know everybody has already said it, but I wrote it, so you're gonna have to hear it again. Garbage trucks have to back down the street and then drive out. UPS pulls down and backs out. Every truck, no truck can turn around, there's no place for it to happen. So between the cars parked on the side of the roads and the traffic up and down, there's, there's, something's gonna happen eventually. One of the larger concerns for us, being the seniors on the street, is that when there's snow, they can't take the snow out, so it gets plowed to the end. There's no park, of course, the snow goes to the side, so the cars can't park on the side, and now an ambulance or a fire truck has to get down there. Impossible. As we get older, that's more of a concern than it was when we first moved there. Let's see. Well, the other part is, hopefully, we'll never have to find out if a fire truck can get down there, because I know that it can't when there's snow. They cannot remove the snow. They have to push it to the end of our street, and eventually, when it gets as far as our driveways, they have to send a payloader and a dump truck to remove the snow because we can't get out. Another safety issue. And if we can't get out, a fire truck can't get down, nor can an ambulance. And our friends at Poli's, we love them, they're great, they've tried very, very hard to keep the traffic off of our street. No matter how hard they try, it just does not work. Cars are parked, and I understand that Ferry Court is very concerned about parking there, but evidently, they don't allow commercial vehicles parked at Ferry Court. So therefore, they are parking on Riverview Place now, which is very interesting, because that never happened in the past. Just over the few, last six months, we started seeing commercial vehicles parked at the end of our street, actually parked in the property where the apartments are gonna be. And I think the other part is, very interesting and very disgusting. So we're dealing with Poli's overflow, we're dealing with commercial vehicles from the condos who I guess are not allowed to park on their property, so they park on ours. And now, to add 24 units on our street is just impossible. We're hoping that, that the town, the concerns of the neighbors and the neighborhood will reach you guys. I know that everybody wants developers in, and we want the area developed, but we want it developed in a smart way, and we're just hoping that you'll take that into consideration. It's a neighborhood with a lot of children playing, no parks, no sidewalks, and they have nowhere else to go but in the street. And that's it. And if you can give us some answers, or at least ask them the questions that I asked, it'd be interesting to hear. Thanks.[1462.92][1462.92][applause]
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition? I've seen none. Ms. Walker, just to inform you that the attorneys have been taking notes. This public hearing will be held open until next month. So we're gonna be tabling this, and I do believe they will probably be back to answer those questions next month. Mr. Solhavy.
Mr. Chairman, before we table, just a question through you to the administrator. Would it be possible for us to ask Public Works what their protocol is for plowing that street? I'm curious, considering the unique characteristics of it, what they do. Do they remove? Do they push to the end? I just think it would be helpful in understanding the situation as it stands right now. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
If there's a way to verify the change of requirements of commercial parking at Ferry Court, I just, it caught my attention. It just seems sort of odd that if they did make that change to not allow commercial property, commercial vehicles, is there any way we can measure or determine where that overflow is going?
Well, I can answer simply that it's in the bylaws. They just don't allow it. Commercial vehicles, they're, where the overflow goes, apparently, it's at the end of Riverview or on the side streets. We have Orchard on one end and Riverview on the other.
Is that historically always the case?
Pretty much, yes. With no one else speaking in opposition, I take a motion to table and keep the public hearing open. One more.
She's making me do it. Gary Walker, 135 Riverview Place. And pretty much everything that Carrie Gleason said, he really covered everything really well, and I'm just agreeing totally with Carrie and all of my other neighbors. And I also just wanted to point out, like, there's gonna be 119 units at Willow and Ferry Boulevard. There's gonna be 48 next to Blue Sky Diner, to the left of it, and Salsie's got 71. I think it came out to 262, which is quite a bit for one little area. And, you know, maybe we should just give it a rest for a while and see how these things play out, instead of just keep putting more and more and more into that same area. And you guys asked some great questions, so I feel, between what they said and what you, the questions that you all asked, I appreciate it, and I'll leave it with that. And thank you again.
Thank you.[1662.51][1662.51][applause] I need a motion to continue to next month?
Do you want to set the actual date? Do we have that available to us? September 26th?
Twenty, I wrote it down.
Wednesday, September 26th.
Okay, I move that we continue the public hearing until Wednesday, September 26th, and then place the application on the table. If I may.
I have a motion by Mr. Solhavy, second by Mr. Hendrick. Any? Nope. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, pass 5-0. Do you want to read that in, or do we, are we reading in 605 Broad Street, or do you want to do it?
No, we can, we handle that administrative. You don't have to read that.
Okay. All right.
We'll just get to the ones that start right away.
Okay, so you need... All right, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing for tonight.
Some moved.
Motion by Mr. Solhavy, second by Mr. Bacola. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Excuse me, people, folks. Excuse me, we still have a meeting that we're conducting. Okay. Another work, approval of the minutes from the July meeting? Oh, wait a minute. No, Jay said it's administrative.
Administrative item. It's on the agenda because we, there was a site plan for the other ones, so we just want to be... want to be consistent.
Got it.
Those people wore me down.
It's been a long night.
Good night, kids.
Good night.
Good luck, Bob.
I think we're going to race through as much as we can on the agenda.
Yeah. What do you want to waive?
There's a couple of examples.
Oh, okay. Kind of like what I meant. Can I get a motion to waive the rules to take 605 Broad Street out of order? And we can get this gentleman out of here. Motion by Ms. Phillips. Do I have a second? By Mr. Solhavy. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. What I need to do is to take 605 Broad Street and 50 Hoozatonic Avenue off the table? Or was it even? Take it out of order, so, all right. We did. Yeah, for something. 605 Broad Street and 50 Hoozatonic Avenue, Rod Swift? Okay. Mr. Hibanski will speak on behalf of him.
Okay, so this is an application, an administrative review for a coastal site plan reviewed for an upgrade of a marine storage system incidental to a marina in a WF zone. After doing a review of the coastal resources, we have shorelands in the area. The Department of Energy Environmental Protection has responded to the town's referral and has no comments regarding this application. The application has also been referred to the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission for review, which no comments have been, actually, we received something recently, and they have, the approval. Has not received a favorable recommendation from the, is needed, let me see. Just let me read it. There were no concerns, and they figured that this would be an improvement to the resiliency of the area and protection of the environment by upgrading the fuel storage system at the site. In terms of the coastal resources, I don't, I actually feel that this is going to be an improvement in the protection of our coastal resources, so I have no concerns regarding this application.
Mr. Hendrick.
Based on Mr. Hibanski's recommendation, I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Vacola. Any further discussion on it? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? So moved. Okay, now we're going to go back to the first petition, text amendment for Stratford Zoning 3.6.
Motion to take the Stratford Zoning Commission text amendment 3.6 regarding projects.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Vacola. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Yes, Ms. Phillips.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this. I'd like to make a motion to approve this application. Per Mr. Hibanski, it does clean up our regulations and simple, clarifies essentially, the practice that we've been doing, and it protects the town and it protects the staff. Therefore, I make a recommendation and agreements to accept it.
Motion by Ms. Phillips. Do I have a second? By Mr. Vacola. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? So moved. Text amendment number, Stratford Zone. Motion by Mr. Hendrick. Do I have a second? Mr. Solhavy. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Do we have a motion on that? By Mr. Solhavy.
Mr. Chairman, I move adoption of the regulation.
Motion by Mr. Solhavy. Do I have a second? Mr. Hendrick. Any discussion on the matter?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I agree with this regulation, and everything that we've discussed in there seems that it gets a good idea. It does clarify a lot of issues that, and ambiguity, when you do have one of those situations, one was, some, one situation was brought to my attention by a former zoning commissioner. And while this won't address that, it does, it will probably help in situations to come. I do have one amendment that I would like to make to the regulation.
The violation?
I remember we had a difficulty with the procedure on this last time. So, if I might make just an amendment, we'll vote on it individually and then vote on it as amended, I think. I make an amendment that we change the word greater, as in the greater portion of the lot, to greatest portion of the lot. And this is in reference to where we said that it could occur in that where there were more than two zones converging on a property, that this would now say the one that is the largest one. And I'd ask for a second.
Second by Mr. Hendrick. Although, any further discussion? Ms. Phillips?
I just want to reassure myself that if there is a situation where there is some inconsistencies that are hardships that are borne out because of this regulation, that the staff always has the opportunity to recommend it to come forward to the zoning commission. Okay.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion on the matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, 5-0.
For the amendment?
Amendment.
And now we vote as amended?
As amended.
And we've already made the motion for that, so.
Do I have a second on the amended version, Mr. Vacola? Any further discussion on the amended version? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now I can do the approval of the minutes? Motion by Mr. Hendrick. Do I have a second? Mr. Vacola? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Discussion, cam site, we got nothing, we got nothing. Zoning enforcement study, got anybody? No? No? Okay. Accessory apartment, nothing. Sediment and erosion control, nope. Planning projects, other items, goal settings, adjournment?
Adjournment.
Motion by Ms. Phillips to adjourn, second by Mr. Vacola. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you very much, everyone.
Reg, what's the chances I don't have any meeting in September or December?
Probably not.
I don't have any administrative items for us to act on currently. Everybody, we made you ID cards for you all. You need them.
We're actually official. If you don't feel like flashing the badge, you're still needing any card.